Good evening, everyone. Today is August 30th, Tuesday, and it's 6:30 PM, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First up on our agenda is the consent agenda. First thing is minutes from August 16th. Has everyone had a chance to read them? Any questions, comments, corrections? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 16th. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is warrants 11, 12, and 14. Any questions or comments? Audrey?
Nope.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve warrants 11, 12, and 14.
Uh, second? I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the booster donation checks. Ms. Jordan?
I am.
Listen.
You'd like to move. She has to open Google up. Okay, yes. Um, I received two additional checks from the Booster Club. I'm looking for you to vote to approve. First check from the Booster Club is for $100 slated to go to cross-country. So they can have a pot of money to buy supplies for the middle school invitational that's run by Matt Casteerata. He's the track coach from Quaden. He's been using Dufrane Park now for the past, I want to say, five or six years, which is really incredible. So they gave them like a start-up fee, fund, if you will, for them to do that successfully. The second was in the amount of $1,000, and that was earmarked to go towards the softball irrigation project. So I had gotten that one in after the two Vanguard checks the last time we were here. So that's just an additional check. Looking for this book me to accept.
Any questions or comments? I'd like to thank the Booster Club. That's awesome coming through again for us. I'll take a motion to accept the booster donation checks. I'll make a motion to accept the booster donation checks. I'll have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next is the junior/senior high, well, senior high school handbook.
Yes, so per your recommendation, we submitted the dress code language to Kimberly, our attorney. She reviewed it, agreed that it was pretty similar in nature. Obviously, ours is a little more detailed. We uploaded that section to the student handbook. She felt it was appropriate and allowed us to have, you know, some say per, you know, with appropriate language, because it's a tricky subject, right? When you talk about dress code. So she gave us what she felt was appropriate and compared it, and really there was not a lot of revisions there. So you do have a copy of the student handbook. It's in red. Todd did a nice job transferring that information over, and it does, and it matches with the J policy. So he had gone through the student handbook, and he felt that we were in very good shape with the current J policies and how it aligns directly with our student handbook.
If I can hop in, so, um, last time we approved, um, the handbook with J I C A, the policy in, and one of the questions that the committee had asked, that I asked Kimberly about was, you know, is the handbook a place where you can be more specific as long as you're aligned with the policy? She did agree that yes, the handbook is a place that does allow for some more specificity. And I also think in that same breath, she felt there were some places that it, there were some changes to it that had to be made. So I shared those edits with Ally and Todd, and those are reflected in what you have, and I'm happy to send you the edits that Kimberly made if you wanted to see those, because I think there were some questions about why certain things might come out and why certain things might stay in. So if you feel like her revisions would be helpful to you, I'm happy to share that with you.
It's on page 49 of the document.
Yeah, 49. I guess the only thing I still have a question about is some of the specificity in here, like, I'm just gonna be blunt, like, the second one, right? Shirts and blouses must cover abdomen. I know I saw almost every single back-to-school picture. Kids, that's just, that's the style, that's whatever. So how do we specify where that applies essentially, to make sure that's equal to all students?
Yeah, it's really...
You know what I mean? Like, it opens that slippery slope.
Yeah, it's, it's very challenging. I mean, if you go to any of the stores, that's what they sell. It's the fashion of the girls. I'm surprised my own daughter didn't get sent home today. And, you know, so we're not targeting and looking at kids and calling them out. It's also 97 degrees in our building right now, and it's hot, you know? So I feel like the first couple of days back, yeah, everyone's a fashionista right now, and then the next eight months, eight and a half months, they're all gonna be in sweats and hoodies. So, yeah, I feel like there's a happy medium. We gotta meet the kids kind of where they're at right now. Tomorrow, we have our grade level meetings, and that was something Todd and I were just talking about, is actually addressing and saying like, all right, to what degree do we say, like, you know, we don't want bras, like, bras need to be covered up, things like that? But it's also, I'm the female administrator, so I would be the one addressing it. I would never put a male administrator in that situation to address any of that. I think that if they are in a situ, in a place where it's like distracting to the rest of the student body, I think that's a different conversation, you know? But everyone has their own opinion about what's appropriate and what's not. It's hard when it's the current trend right now, but I'm not saying it's right.
Right, so that's almost my concern, though, is that because everyone has a different...
Especially number two, if we are...
Well, so that's what I mean, because it's a very vague, and we know, like, that's the trend, that's fashionable. What's distracting, for one, I would just be concerned that it should be distracting them for all in a way, or however we're gonna do that needs to be equal to everyone. So if one person might deem a distraction, I think that that opens a very slippery slope potentially. So that's my only concern, is some of it being a little, like, if we're gonna be that particular, like I said, it's just tough when, as an example, that is obviously what's in right now, and what a lot of, you know...
You know, those are conversations that I'm hoping parents are having with their children before they send them off to school, too. I certainly had that bright and early this morning, and, you know, when she pulls down, it's good. And then when you walk, it creeps up a little bit, and then your abdomen's displayed. So is it two inches of an abdomen, or is it four inches of an abdomen? So it really comes down to, you know, it's administrative discretion. But again, you know, in a few weeks, I feel like the fad is gone. Is that the right answer? I don't know. I don't know if I have the right answer. I'm assuming other schools are dealing with the crop tops as well. When we usually have a conversation with a student, you know, hey, would you be able to cover up or put something else on? It's hard to ask a kid right when it's sweltering hot in the building to put a hoodie on, you know, to cover up.
So I guess one of my questions is, if you ask one person to cover up that's wearing a crop top, do you then...
You gotta do it for all.
Do you have to do it for all?
Sure.
And does it happen that way? I mean, has it in the past? Because I don't, the conversation that we had last time, and I don't, I don't know that you were here, is like, we don't want it to come across as like discriminatory in any way, like, you know, a certain kid is being singled out, or...
Yeah, I would not, I have not yet received any negative feedback from parents that we are targeting or discriminating against their child. So I would really lean on parents to say, you know, we feel like you're being unfair. Like, we usually, we use our administrator discretion, like, that's where that comes in.
Okay.
And I feel like it's just you have to trust in us that, you know, we're, it is a learning environment, but we also are flexible to some regard. You know, I'm a mom, and, you know, we, when we do speak with the kids, we do talk to them about, you know, how you present yourself and what you're wearing, but again, you're walking a fine line with what your words are to them, because they could take it in so many different ways. So I try to talk to the students as if I would want someone to, how, they, I would want them to speak to my own child, you know, if they had a concern about what they were wearing.
Okay.
I also think to, like, focus in, and this was part of the conversation I had with Kimberly around health and safety, like, number four underwear needs to be, of course, that health comes into that, and the standard really is substantial disruption. So, like I said, I can share some of the edits that Kimberly sent. So there was a line that talked about, or is it distracting to the classroom or school? She took that out in that line, and that's substantial disruption. So the standard is really that disruption to the school day, so you're not saying, I think Audrey said it last time, my values versus your, like, the distraction...
Right, that distraction piece, like, just irks me a little bit, because it's a, it's like a trigger word of opening up a can of potential worms.
Yeah, and even looking at some of the edits, I see, like, distraction is still in the second or third line, but when Kimberly and I spoke, she really talked about how the standard is a substantial disruption to the day.
Could you, is there a place where I can find, so I can look at them side by side? Because I can see that there's definitely some adjustments, and, like, I was looking for the one with, like, the spandex and the tank tops, and it looked like that is removed, and I just wanted to see, like, what else kind of got...
I will share that with, I'll share the edits that we have from Kimberly right now.
So while you're looking for that piece, that was the, you know, I feel like I talked about it at length last meeting, but that was the only kind of remaining part for me that was a little bit of a sticking point, was that distraction versus disruption, because I feel like those are two very different words, and they have two very different connotations. So if, me personally, I feel a lot better with the word disruption versus distraction in the wording of whatever's here. And I, yeah, I was looking through it, too, again, and I still see it in there.
It's in that third line I saw, yeah. So we could, and you certainly can suggest an edit to this, but I just, I just shared it with the committee.
I'm happy to edit that right out and put in disruption. I agree with you, Jill. I feel like it has to be pretty substantial, right, for us to, and I feel like that's how we are, right? That's my experience, you know, being here and being in the teaching role myself. It has to be like, whoa.
Yeah.
Kind of takes you back, and then those are the conversations that we have, you know, with the students, so...
And if, yeah, I feel like disruption is that kind of global piece, and distraction maybe gets more of that kind of blame and, you know, dress kind of causing somebody else to maybe say or act, and it, that's where it gets really tricky and troublesome, I think, in my mind.
And I feel like, I agree with you 100%. I'm sure everyone else feels the same. There's so many unique styles that our kids have, right? And we always wanna support their unique style, and that kind of goes to, like, the trend right now of the high pants, because as the weather gets a little cooler, instead of shorts, they're gonna be high-rise pants again, and they're gonna be bell bottoms, I feel like that's what we call them. So that's gonna be happening. So they'll transition to the crop tops, then they're no longer crop tops, because now they're high pants. So then they'll pretty much be a moot point at that, come a few weeks, when it starts to cool off a bit. But I'm happy to use the word disruptive or disruption to the word...
In the fourth paragraph, it does speak to the disruption. And if you see in the piece that I, the document I just shared with you, she didn't cross out the distracting piece from that.
Yeah, there's a line right there that students should refrain from wearing clothing which results in a substantial disruption. Is that what you're talking about, Steve? Yeah.
So this hat, it looks like, is for the whole school, it's not...
Yeah, I own that. I was in an end-of-the-year meeting, and that was when we were meeting with the junior high teachers. I was like, why really do we have this no-hat rule for the junior high? I'm like, it's part of the kids, they really love them, and again, it's part of their personality.
Right.
You know, so when we were meeting with the seven, eight, and nine today at their meetings, we explained that you can wear hats, and they were like, what? This is exciting.
That's great.
You know, so that was mine. I didn't get the memo to Todd in time, but I had him fix that in there.
Perfect.
It's teacher discretion, though, in the classrooms, right?
Right, but that's, I feel like that's always been the way.
Yep.
Mr. Woodcock did not like hats. Not in his class.
I guess my only hang-up is really number two, because, you know, fat or not, we're allowing it. So then, if you're allowing one item, does that not negate the rest?
Yeah, I would say there's things in here, right, that we're flexible on in the student handbooks. We really try to work with the kids. If we wanna cut this out of here, then, right, it's your decision, really. If you wanna cut it out completely, shirts and blouses must cover the abdomen. It's not targeted towards males or females. I know blouses kind of are, right?
I feel like you're covered, if we took that one out, you're still covered, because it's some...
By the disruption.
By the disruption.
Sure.
If someone shows up in a bikini top, male or female, it's a disruption, right? Because everyone's gonna be, and I think that that leaves it out, because I do feel like that one is...
It's a hang-up for me.
I agree.
Is it a hang-up? Can I just ask respectfully, ask, is it a hang-up because of its current fad right now?
And it's being allowed.
Well, yeah, I just don't, I don't like agreeing to a policy that we're set...
Like, if we were like, no, go home, change, go home, change, go home, change, to every single one, and being that much of a stickler, then fine. But like, you know, then if some kid shows up with profanity on her shirt, look at her with her abdomen sticking out. Like, why, what's the big deal? You know what I mean? Because it needs, it has to be, if we're gonna be specific, it has to be consistent for all.
Because if you're outlining it, and we don't go after, because it's not a disruption, well, I don't find my, my, what you consider vulgar to be vulgar, but I find where belly's sticking out disruptive, you know? So I agree with the vulgar shirt, like, I think that that's, and I also feel like it's, the shirts and blouses, I do feel like it's more female-oriented. I mean, we could take blouses out, but, you know, I, because then you, you see the guys at gym, shirts and skins or whatever, so their abdomens are then showing. So I kind of would like to get rid of number two, because I feel like we have the disruption piece, covers that, and the other ones are sort of guidelines. I, I don't know, that's, for whatever it's worth, that's where I'm leaning right now. Anybody else thoughts, adjustments?
I mean, I agree, just with number two. I just, I think that if we're gonna have a policy, and we're almost gonna say, but because it's a trend, we're not really sticking to it, I just don't see the point of it being a personal...
Yeah, it's much more than that.
Right, well, I'm sure.
It's much, much more than that, but I understand.
I just think it's covered everywhere else, essentially, if it's a disruption, that I don't know if it needs to be singled out here. That's just, that's just my...
No, I'm with all of you on that. If you have undergarments covered, if you have no beachwear, if you have, you know, all of those other pieces, you're kind of covering all those spaces.
And then are we also switching distraction to disruption in that third line, too?
Yep. What is that noise? Wait. It doesn't, no, it sounds like, I guess I'm a bit much closer, I've lost over. It's very bizarre. The distraction. Yeah, it's a distraction.
Disruption. Was there anything else specifically in there? I made those changes. The student handbook is something that we'd like to share out with families this week in the Ram report. I know it's just some light reading.
Saturday morning reading.
Saturday morning.
So looking for your approval. I know that you voted the last time pending the changes, but we made a couple more, so do we need to, do you need to vote on it again?
If this is gonna be added, it needs to be voted on again.
I think we'll take a motion and to vote as it's updated, as long, you took number two out, but I don't see it updated, so I'm sure that it is...
She gave us a PDF, so...
Oh, okay.
I have the running copy right here.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Ramby Junior/Senior High School Handbook for the 2022-2023 school year with the adjustments to the school dress code, including the changing of the word distraction to disruption and the elimination of number two.
Can I have a second? A second. Any further discussion before we vote? With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, next is the East Meadow Handbook.
So if I can just pause real quick, and I know we've introduced Lisa to the committee, and we've announced Brad, but this is our first opportunity to introduce Brad Rosenberg, our new assistant principal at East Meadow, to the school committee, so this is him.
Nice to meet you all.
Brad, you can come on up, Brad. Are you gonna present, or?
Yeah, I'll come up.
Okay, great.
I can sit here if you'd like.
No, I'm good.
Sure?
Yeah.
I don't mind moving.
He's always looking to move.
So we had the exact same language for the dress code in our policy, so, you know, we took notes on what you guys wanted to change, and we're more than happy to accommodate that. The only other things that we changed is we took out the mask mandated policy and just put in that students have the option to wear masks, and that there's adult and kid masks that are available throughout the school, and that we're only asking staff and students to wear masks when they enter the nurse's station.
Our dress code is on page 31 if you're looking for it.
I don't, it feels like the format, mine's looking a little weird, but it's probably just me.
It's in the folder twice.
Oh, is that why? Maybe I'm not in the right one?
That's what I'm thinking, because my format looks like hers. That was our face, sorry, the format on the one at least we pulled up looks...
Because like, the calendar's off the, sort of off the page.
It's loaded as a Google Doc.
Oh, that's a thing.
Yeah. Oh, okay. But as a PDF, obviously, it's formatted.
Yes.
Yeah, perfect. So our confused faces might just be because we're looking on the screen. No, no, no. Not...
Why is it missing?
All right.
I do like that the two policies mirror each other.
Yes.
Me, too. In that specific area.
I really feel like a lot of it should be, I mean, I understand there's differences between ages, but there really should be...
Not for dress.
Yeah, it should, it should be pretty universal, so it's, it's nice to see it.
But I'm assuming the hat thing is not... Oh, they are. Okay.
Great.
Yep, sorry.
Are there changes in red in this one as well, or...
Did you print? The, the changes were highlighted in yellow.
Okay.
Towards the back, and that begins on page 74.
Okay.
And that's where Brad added the PBIS piece.
Okay.
That will be bringing, sort of, we energizing at the school.
I guess as I'm going through it, too, formatting might be the thing. Trying to figure out where I can tell you where it is. It starts about pupil placement, and again, it's just because I'm determining a student's class placement is a complicated task and recognition of this fact, parents and 32 guardians. I just feel like that sounds weird. Am I...
Where, what pages, where are you in?
It says parent, oh, because it might be the page number in between. That's what it is.
Yeah, it's the...
Parents and 32 guardians. I'm like, why 32?
33.
It's the page number. It wasn't until you said it, 32.
It's a formatting thing.
Yeah, yeah, I got it. I was like, hang on.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
It's like, right in the middle, so I was like, wait a second. What's going on? Why 32? I'm good.
That is very complicated.
Very specific.
It happens with like, 34, too. That's so funny.
Yeah, if you go onto the PDF, or you have a little doc, or the PDF.
I don't have a...
I didn't notice it before, but the hyperlink is active in this one, so it was blue, and I was like, oh, I don't know if she's still... Is Kenny Moriarty still CP president?
Look at that.
Because her, Carly just graduated, so I don't know.
I'm too.
I could text her.
So we all save the drive, so then you can...
I'll totally put her on the spot right now.
Yeah, I'll check it, Megan.
I may go. I get in trouble.
I think it was the...
Any other questions or anything, anything for the East Meadow one?
No, the only thing that I noticed when I was looking at it earlier is on, oh, we're way past it. Initially, there was the previous kind of school committee, so it was, it was the 21-22 year with previous school committee members on that, so just to update for the new school year, a statement issue.
Oh, the school committee, okay.
Where's that joke?
I think it was with, like, staff and... Audrey was getting rid of extra copies of the handbook. It's gone.
It's already in there.
Because you need to be in the PDF, otherwise it's a hot mess with press.
Is there, okay.
There's a PDF version. I got rid of all the people.
Okay, so now my whole thing is all missed.
Oh, that's why we got booted out. You're welcome.
Just go onto the PDF. You won't have it looking confusing. It looks much straight, more streamlined.
That's not it.
So there are some updates that still need to be done. No.
Now mine's gone altogether. Like, I don't even have the PDF one.
I can't open it.
I just have East Meadow Facilities, that's a PDF.
Can you reshare it with me, Audrey?
Would you like me to go make some hard copies?
No, 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 it's there. Okay. I'm in it.
I can't open it.
Now I'm there, nobody else. This is the opposite of last.
Do you see it? Steven, do you see it in mine?
I don't see it in mine either.
Oh, now it all went away completely.
Whatever you just did, it's all gone.
Way to go.
See?
Would you like me to reshare?
Yes, please.
I have my laptop.
Yeah, please. Yeah, but that's weird.
I can see it, I just can't open it. Mine's completely gone.
Yeah, mine, too.
Okay, so for the, we'll update the school committee, we'll take out Jennifer Millet and George. Thank you, George. Okay. I'll make it, edit directly on here.
It melted on again, it was just... You weren't in a Google Doc?
So Steve, can I share with you? You probably have everyone in here.
I know.
If you have a PDF.
I mean, the PDF, there's a PDF.
Just have to download the PDF.
Do I need to go all the way out and come back in?
Refreshing.
No.
Just refresh.
I really want...
Get it all.
Yeah, I've got nothing in mine now, I only have...
Don't call it, George.
There's only one.
I mean, you can try...
Can you see it, Audrey?
And then just, we can...
No.
Actually, yes, we're gonna...
Yeah, but they're still there. That's why I'm confused.
Not on mine, I have each.
So if you look up Elementary Handbook...
In the search one, you mean?
Yeah, they're still there.
Trying to do housekeeping.
Or even go to your recent.
So the one that I see is a 2020-2021 PDF.
Same here.
It doesn't go, like, they're, they're not...
It should be 22, 23.
Yeah, so we don't have it.
Sorry. So, I mean...
It's coming.[1679.33]
Patience.
Okay, I just reshared it with you, and now I'll put it.
Oh, sent it in an email, did you?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you can go ahead, but then, uh, you can make these.
He just reshared it, but.
If you go in there and, wow, the one, they're looking at the one that Steven shared, you can make these edits right now. Can I maybe get it approved to?
But it is a Google Doc.
Yeah. Yeah, but this one.
If it's a Google Doc.
Now it fits better.
Yeah.
Okay, we're back in business.
So, page. GG two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and then take out Jennifer Millet and put in George.
I have a quick question, just because I'm looking it over in general. In bold, there's, uh, all books at East Meadow School must be covered. Are we covering, um, like textbooks, hardcover books, like, that the kids have? I just don't, I know that I've never gotten a book sent home to cover. What is, are you talking about like the, um, it says, okay. Under school day, archipelago, uh, twenty-two. It says all books at East Meadow School must be covered and students are also expected to keep their consumable books in usable condition for the entire year. I'm just wondering if that's a new thing, because it's in bold. Are we asking, like I said, families to cover? I know that that used to be a thing, you know, you cover hardcover books, newspaper.
That was on the, the previous, um, parent stat, uh, student handbook.
I don't think we, we often saw the hardcover books.
Right.
Come home, it was more Jenny's consumables.
Okay.
So maybe that's why they just stayed at school, so it wasn't a need, like as time went on.
Right.
Consumables, they maybe just added the consumable wording, and then that's all that we saw come home.
Gotcha. I wasn't sure, just because it was in bold, I didn't know if that was something new that we were doing, or like if we were gonna start seeing them at home more and that people needed to cover, or what it was.
Doubtful that they'd be coming home, because, you know, typically, we don't, we're not sending home big textbooks for kids to carry.
Right.
And as Brad referenced, you know, I, I do believe that, you know, this is a lot of the, the policy that was in place before we came here. And it's, you know, a little difficult for us to ascertain exactly what.
Of course.
To stay in there.
If it was in bolded, I don't think I would have even
Yeah.
Noticed, to be perfectly honest.
I think, I'm just gonna mark that as a question mark, and maybe we keep it in for now.
Yeah.
But I think that by next summer, we'll be in a much better place to know, like, what we can really take out and, and return.
I'm sure. I just wasn't sure if that was a new policy, anything that we were updating.
So maybe it doesn't need to be bolded.
On page eleven. Now you brought up bolded.
Sorry.
Bolded, I don't know if it's not supposed to be, now I'm like, stuck out.
Where?
Right after.
Permission.
Permission of the vision.
Uh, we?
Yeah.
Oh.
Really?
We should talk about the drop-off thing.
Just staying the same.
Cause it's in here, right, but just how?
Well.
Is it the same, or not?
It's the same as it's been.
The drop-off, uh, map?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I didn't realize it came through the high school, I guess, so when you sent me that picture today, I didn't realize it came through.
It's been a work in progress for a while, the drop-off scenario, I'm sure as you guys will be here for the year seeing it, you'll probably start making some mental notes, I've seen you out there already.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a little, it's a little wonky, but there's only so much we can work with, but it is, it's really tricky. Yeah. That's just something for another time, but in general, I know myself as a parent, I go through, I hate that you cross where the buses are, it's like the most bizarre, nerve-wracking, in-between pausing, it's a little.
Mike, Mike, I expect that we'll be making some changes to the procedures for dismissal and, and drop-off in the morning. But, um, anything that we do change that would impact the handbook, we'll make sure that you see it first.
Okay. Awesome. Yeah, that's definitely, like I said, this has been for years, it's nothing, you know, I think since the school really.
Opened.
Since it, I know, but since it opened, since it's open, pickup and drop-off has been very difficult, it's just because we're so close to two oh two. There's a lot of people that do pick up, like, a lot. We don't have the best design for it.
I do have a question just about, what is it, under, it's under expectations and discipline, the conduct and discipline. So I know there's a link that's there, and I think it's a thirty-seven H, thirty-seven H and a half, H and three-quarters, all the suspension and that stuff, but I'm sure that's what the link is there for, but if there's parents that are requesting hard copies and things like that, I think if I remember reading it correctly, the high school had it all, not the link, but the full policy, so I guess my question would is would it make sense to have the listed out policy, just so that if parents ask for a hard copy of the handbook, they're not missing that part? Especially, I think, that would be an important, not that there's any students going through those procedural steps, but.
Good to have.
Yeah.
It's on page twenty-eight. Okay, we can make that change for sure.
I don't know if this is just me, but I'm on page thirty-nine, the accept, the acceptable use policy, the technology, that link doesn't seem to work.
Page thirty-nine?
Yes. I don't know if someone else can try it, but. It doesn't click, right, okay.
Oh.
Yeah, it's a high, it's not opening.
You will check that too.
Okay, thank you.
What's in there farther down too? I take it back.
What was that?
Student discipline's in.
Yeah, student discipline is in there farther down, so even though the link was above it.
Oh, I see what you mean.
It's, it's under there.
I might as well take the link.
Yeah.
Like page forty-four, right? I thought I remembered seeing it, so I was questioning myself, but there it is.
Oh, okay, I was confused before, I see what you're saying.
I wonder, you know, honestly, I think it's confusing, I have discipline in a couple different places. Just noting that we could have everything on.
These doc, these handbooks can kind of take on a life of their own, and then you think you have it all how you want it, and they take one piece as, yeah.
And then you change one page and you gotta do the whole table of contents all over again.
Yeah.
I found another link that doesn't work either. I don't know if it's.
What page, Audrey?
Fifty-five.
That's okay. Okay, we'll check that one too.
That's weird. Cause it works when you put it in URL, so I'll just have to see if it's.
Yeah, the copy and pasting works with the hyperlink itself.
We'll hyperlink it.
I wonder if it has something to do with that, so.
I might wanna check, I'm, like, I don't know if that's just, again, how we're on it.
Yeah, I'm not sure, we'll, we'll play with it some more.
Everyone's looking at the link, isn't it? You see all the little cursors right here, you gotta hit them in the back, it's lighting up like a Christmas tree. So, um, it looks like we've got a few changes, um, do we, as a committee, wanna wait until we see the final, um, stuff? Are we good that the changes we made, and do we wanna, um, or do we wanna do like we did with the one for the high school last meeting approve? With some, you know, minor things that are updated, or how, cause we should have something in, in effect, so I don't know what you guys want to do.
I feel like everything's there, but I don't know how both of you feel, like, if you want just, I mean, we're gonna meet on the sixth.
Sixth, yeah.
As our next meeting, so I don't know if you feel like that's, like, comfortable with you to just do those changes, especially if you're gonna kind of change the code of conduct discipline and merge those, to wait and then come back, or if that's too much time for families? I know they're all like riveted by reading it.
I, I think, uh, my guess is that, um, no, well, no one's asked for it yet, I could say that. It could be, I'm thinking of one possibility, could be that we sh, I hate to share a draft, because it, it just feels uncomfortable, because then it may not be seen again. I, I know we can make these changes and have it done in, in time to get out this week. Would it be okay, I, I know you can't agree on things and talk outside of here, but if we shared it to you all in a PDF, is there a way to have some kind of communication that you're okay with the changes? I don't know.
Could with the chair, could we designate that the chair handles it?
Yeah, I think that that's fine, cause then Steven and I can look at it and make sure that the changes that we talked about are good.
Especially given it's not context changes.
It's links and.
And you're talking about maybe grouping discipline and one.
Formatic.
You know, and then, like, mine, it's all minors.
Discipline, it's not gonna change anything, it's just one part's not gonna be there, so.
Kind of organize it a little bit.
So what we can do is vote on the content, and just whoever makes the motion, that it's noted that, um, the chair will make the final, you know, deal with the final revision.
Yeah, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve the East Meadow School handbook for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year, um, pending the chair's final approval, but for now, motion to approve all the content.
Can I have a second?
No second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Excellent.
Do you wanna know, um, now on page, I think it's seventy-four, they started on the PBIS. Really appreciate the work that Brad and Lisa have already started around PBIS, I think teachers got up and running today with an account where students could start being awarded points, and in October, they'll start being able to spend those points for incentives and prizes and things like that, so teachers have access to that, so they can track it, and it can happen throughout the school, so, um, I think Lisa said, like, re-establishing that has been a priority, and I know they both worked really hard on it, so look forward to seeing how it plays out, but, um, I did wanna note that.
Yeah, thank you for that, I know, I've already heard about it from my kids, like, and it's only second day of school, and they were so excited about, you know, I, yeah, like eight years old, she was like, we're gonna get points, and we can do, you know, it was, they were so excited, so clearly, other people are excited too, if it's already trickling down to the students, so thank you for this, I'm excited to see this program.
And we'll add information on, you know, our newsletters, so parents, you know, know the events and what PBIS is all about.
Awesome.
Excellent.
Thank you both, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, visitor's comments? I think he's here for the five. Oh, I, I'm sorry, I forgot to look back there. Yes, well, let me read my little blurb, and then you can come. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of a regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone who is unable to sign in the end of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included in the record of the meeting. Okay, so now you may come forward.
You can go right where Brad was, if that's okay.
I'm Jetty McCullough, I live at ninety-one Chapin Circle in Ludlow. I taught in Grammy for twenty-three years, and I just wanted to come and talk to all of you for a minute, and thank you. These, those years were amazing to me. I know the ones of you that have had children in the schools, I've known those kids, and I have had, every day was a joy, and I'm not exaggerating, and our superintendent can vouch for that, I would, the children and the parents and the dedication of the school committee too have made such a difference. And even though I don't like meetings and never came to these, I knew what was happening, and a lot of these decisions like this, you've had some really great discussions just while I've been here, I was super impressed. It's kind of amazing that it's this tiny town, and it's, um, like, probably one of the best, I think we could win like some statewide thing at some point, I really do, I've said that before. I really feel like we could be leaders in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts because of the quality of people that are here, and of course, the teachers, who are all like, like, besties to me, so anyways, I gave, I've always given the teachers these flowers, you'll see them all over the building, and then whenever we would get new hires, pairs and teachers and staff, I would give them the flowers, so I wanted to give you guys a flower. It's just to give you the best year ever.
Thank you, Jetty.
Thank you so much, Jetty.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
I'm so lucky that I got to teach in Grammy, what a gift, every day a gift.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you for doing it.
We're fortunate to have you for as long as we did, Jetty. She also got to wake up and go paddle boarding yesterday, so.
Thank you.
Enjoy retirement, thank you so much.
So sweet.
Wow, that was so nice.
That was sweet.
Okay, next up is New Business and Junior Fire Academy, Ms. Jordan.
I think Chief O'Neal is gonna join Ms. Jordan? Yes.
That is actually in our email, I think.
I sent it to you.
I did not touch it. Not it, and I'm sorry for the earlier confusion to everyone.
Oh, gosh, don't worry about it. No worries whatsoever.
So at the junior, senior high school, we're always thinking of new ways that we can expand on our offerings and, um, given resources and our student interest, we're trying to promote new programs, one of the new programs is targeting students in a good way, right? For their interests, we have a lot of students that have been interested in becoming police officers, correctional officers, and attending, um, school for fire sciences. So with the new chief coming into town, we ran the idea by the new chief, and we had talked about it a couple times, you know, for over the last couple of years, but he was really, um, supportive, and I asked Mike to come tonight because, um, he has experience running this program. So he'll have all the answers for you, um, but ideally, what it's gonna look like is a pilot this year. We have one student interested, and for Grammy, that's a lot.
Yeah.
I wouldn't expect to have fifteen signed up, but it's good that we have a pilot going. We expect to run it in a similar format to a work-based learning experience, where it will almost be pass fail, the students will be getting credits, they'll be doing a minimum of ten hours a week, like, there's a lot of room for growth there, if they wanted to do thirty hours a week, they could. Um, so as of right now, it's really just slated for F and G block, which are the last two blocks of the school day. And by the end of this training, um, they would have their CPR training and certification, first responder training, and of course, all participants that would sign up for the program would need to sign off on a waiver. So I'll pass it over to Chief O'Neal, so he can actually elaborate more on what the program encompasses, um, and what our students will be able to walk away with.
Hi, how are you? I'm Mike O'Neal, I am the new chief, I've been here four months, um, I come from South Hadley, uh, District Two, I was there for thirteen years, I was the Lieutenant of Fire Operations. And we ran a junior program, um, it kind of transitioned to Mount Hoyo College, who, uh, we have a lot of pre-med stu, had a lot of pre-med students that came and rode with us, um, just to get experience and kind of put it on their resume, um, for med school. We had, I was part of the junior program when it started, um, came up through the ranks, and at the age of thirty-two, I'm now the fire chief, um, in the town, so I'm a product of a junior fire pro, program, so it, it definitely is a huge asset to the community, um, and it gets the foot in the door, um, to be part of the service. Like Ellie said, CPR first responder, they'll be able to ride with us on our ambulance at, at times, they'll be able to come on inspections with me. And they can expand as much as they want, or as little as they want, um, but it'll set them in the right direction, uh, when they graduate, to be able to understand a little bit more about the fire service, um, through college, so.
That's really interesting. So it would be similar with the F and G as like dual enrollment?
Sure. That was probably a better comparison than work-based learning.
Uh, just cause I think some of, I just relate it to what I know with Eva and Marcus, and, um, so be in school for the first half of the day, have their academic classes, and leave, and then they would report to the fire station, to, okay. And we have one student signed up so far?
We have one student, we're working. We have one student, we're working the kinks out there with this one student.
Okay.
It's really marketable to be able to earn money.
Yeah.
With senior internship program, um, that will be able to run this fall as well. So we're trying to, you know, have those conversations and say, you're going to gain a lot more by the time you graduate, you'll be 18 years old, you can apply to be a volunteer firefighter, like that's a given.
Right.
So we want to, if he, if the student doesn't plan to attend college for fire science, they are set up for success by the end of this program to be able to come right on as a, as a volunteer firefighter and then can grow within. So it's really pretty incredible, um, but yeah, we're excited.
What is like the course, like is it from fall until the whole school year?
It would be the year.
What's the, um, grade level for going into this?
Yeah, that's a great, we talked about that a lot and the student needs to be able to drive themselves. So we started originally talking about juniors and seniors because juniors have their licenses as well. And they have to really be in good academic standing and their schedule needs to allow for it. So we were really looking at juniors and seniors. This one particular student is a senior. We had two seniors slated for it, um, but the other one decided to do a nursing internship here at East Meadow. So they're starting that, um, one block a day, which because this, this one student was more geared towards the nursing field, although the experience with being on the ambulance, it was just a bit too much for that one student, um, in addition to taking some of the, um, AP classes and classes at ECC. So we're trying to tailor, which is really cool to be able to do that. Small schools have the ability to do these things, um, tailor it too. And we'll try the pathway and we'll see how it goes. So we're trying to expand on a couple pathways to see, um, where we can grow.
I love it. Any other questions?
It's exciting. It's exciting seeing any new program come, especially, you know, that's going to give right back to the community and be a community building thing. I think it's really exciting. So thank you for bringing this to us.
Yeah, I appreciate it too. I think Ellie and I have talked quite a bit about how do we provide our students opportunities to have a competitive advantage against their peers in other communities? How do we get them these, we call them stackable credentials, like CPR training and things like this, um, and pathways that are individualized? So, um, we're identifying things that they're interested in and can engage in and that they find interesting. And I think when we're able to do that, there's a mutual benefit certainly. So certainly appreciate the work and the collaboration. And I hope very soon we're talking about a group of students who is able to participate in that.
Actually, sorry, I do have one question. Is the, um, CPR training and first aid, is that included in the program cost-wise or is that going to be an additional thing for the student?
No, it's included in the.
Awesome.
Yep.
Okay, um, any other questions? Right now I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the Junior Fire Academy.
Have a second?
No second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very nice to meet you too, chief.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. All right, next, oh, what did I do here? Next up is school capacity. Everybody's favorite.
Riveting.
So, um, go ahead.
I just wanted to note that I did throw a couple of documents from the past, um, into the folder to know that everyone has had access to them in the past. So just, just for information, um, so people had a little bit of information of where the conversation has been previously.
And I think there is a school capacity folder that everyone did have access to at one point.
But so none of this is new information. This is just what we've had for reference for the conversation.
Exactly.
Okay, great. I don't know where it would be anymore. It's probably in last year's primary. Uh, primary folder, the 20, when, uh, 2021 to 2022?
I don't know what year we're in.
What?
Yes, you're right.
Yeah.
21 to 22.
I just typed in school capacity and it all pops up. That would have been so much easier than me trying to guess. So if we, um, that, you, you mean the work group folder? Audrey, is that the one that you're referring to? That one or the, uh, the other one?
I'd love to be able to say yes, definitely, but I have access to everything because I was on it. So it would be best if someone that wasn't on it clarified what they're seeing.
I mean, we definitely have access to the school capacity work group, but.
Yeah, you shared that whole folder.
Yeah, we have that and we have the school capacity maps as well.
Does George have it?
Uh, she has a folder for the ca-, the maps that I did see in the folder.
So it's a folder called school capacity work group?
Yeah, it's grayed out though for me.
And.
I do too, so.
I'm adding him now.
Okay.
I'm allowed.
I was going to say it looks like.
Just don't delay.
Sorry.
There we go. Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so I, um, talked to Stephen, um, a little bit this afternoon about this because I just wanted to kind of make sure that I understood what the main objective of what we wanted to discuss was tonight. So I was like, are we trying to make a decision tonight? And I know that's the ultimate goal, but I don't know, maybe we will end up being able to make a decision tonight. But one of the things, um, that when Stephen and I were talking about is we've had questions that still sort of feel like they're lingering. So I, if we're looking for, and I'm, I'm the worst case, oh, thank you. Now I can see you.
I know, I'm like, I can't keep doing this long neck business.
Um, one of the things, and I'm probably the worst offender of it, is like I have these questions on, on how, how it will look, but I haven't been able to necessarily.
I think the trickiest part for that, because I totally see you and I see that myself, but we, it's along those lines where we've said before, like we've hired this amazing staff and you have to at some point, like, you know, put it into their hands too, if that's the chosen path too of things, you know? We've gotten this far.
Right.
And that's, it's, it's tricky. I agree with you a hundred percent.
So I, what I was thinking about is if we could, as a committee, come up with the specific questions that are hangups, that we can then ask Stephen and his team to try to put some frameworks around and it would be information that you and the work group wouldn't have necessarily had the ability to see or, or do, right? Because we're trying to, we're trying to get into the weeds without really getting into the weeds, but it's, it's like the question marks where I get myself, like, how will it work and what does it look like and how much will it cost and things like that? So I don't know if that's the exact right way to do it, but we've got to sort of start somewhere and, and push through with how we want to do it. And when I was having this conversation, I was like, well, the things that I'm, I guess, where I have the most questions right now is we're going off of a census. And so I'm wondering, when we look at what the census said for like the, this year's incoming class, what's, what's like the plus or minus on that? Like what's the margin of error? Is it?
Well, and I would say it's not even accurate anymore.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. So, because we built this school off of census data that was wildly inaccurate because we built the school and we were flooded with people and all of a sudden, we sort of, we've had far more resident students than we had ever expected, which is fantastic. It's the best problem to have, right? We've got people that want to come to our school. But if we're going to be making decisions based on census data, I think it might be helpful to know like, how does it look? Like if we're, you know, what did the census say that we're using for this year's incoming kindergarten class? Did it say we had 39 and we got 35?
And that is in here, what the census data did say.
Did say, but like we don't have what the final enrollment is, right?
Well, by now we would have K's final enrollment. Like super close. I mean, like we could probably look it up right now and it's probably.
About 38, last I checked.
So if it's, I mean, if it.
And that's not including there's several at Children First.
I believe it's five at Children's First.
Children.
Children First.
Don't do it. Sorry, I just teased.
Um, so just like some of.
So that would be the number on the census from last year's 44, that would put us at 43.
But I just, I guess would, you know, is it always been, clearly it hasn't been. So, you know, is, um.
And like last year, number that's in the chart from the capacity committee was in census data, it was our actual data as of, so anything else census-wise is looking ahead, not looking back.
So I don't know. That was my, my, my two cents for whatever it's worth, but now let's just open discussion and, um, the other thing is.
I think.
I'm sorry. I was going to say it's 7:30. I'd like to time balance this and, um, with quick show of hands, 25 minutes and then we'll check in and see where we feel. Is 25 minutes enough? Do we, um, do we want to do longer, shorter? Just so we're not here until 11 o'clock, just still sort of talking ourselves to death.
25 minutes sounds great.
Um, just all those, it's not an official vote, but just if you're in agreement.
Sounds good.
Okay, great.
Um, I'm just going to say that a good document that we had shared with you guys was the school capacity discussion points.
So I do like the idea, Jen.
If it's easier, I can move that into the folder.
In the.
That everyone already has access to.
Uh, did, which one? I'm sorry, I was trying to set the timer.
School capacity discussion points.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
I like the idea of kind of talking about what the potential hangups are, what we're looking for, more information. Wise, I know myself, I would say I'm not comfortable tonight making a decision because we don't have enough information. So what's the information that we want to be able to make a decision? I think it's a good conversation to really have.
And I, like, I know this is my own personal hangup, but am I saying I don't have enough information because I'm not comfortable with the decision? Or is, I mean, like, I can say that with some, some certainty that I know that that's, that's weighing on me because I feel like there's hangups that I don't want to necessarily put out in there, but there's the MSBA issue and.
It's so many years out, but yes.
Um, but is it though? I mean, if we have an application and it's out there and we, our application right now as it stands, 100% is not accurate. If we make this decision, because we're, we're referencing a 7 through 12 building. So we would have to withdraw to do that. And that shouldn't be the only reason we do something because, I mean, it's, uh, it's a small percentage of the fact, if we get it through, it's a number of things, but our application that's in there on file is a 7 through 12 building. So if we make this decision for next fall, that's no longer an accurate thing, so we would have to withdraw.
So one of the things I feel like I've maybe mentioned before too is, you know, ultimately long-term is where we're really looking at here. Like what is the decision that needs to be made in the best interest of students of Grammy for long-term, um, for Grammy growth, for all these things? Because if MSBA comes up and, you know, again, we have to kind of have that long arching view in this area, as challenging as, you know, we don't like the options and that are put before us. So I think that that just needs to really be not in the back of the mind, but actually more in the forefront of the mind.
Yep. But I, you know, uh, I don't know. Go ahead, Jen.
So for me, and maybe this is just restating the obvious, but it's kind of been, you know, I think back to even the initial conversations, groups sat in, different things like that. For me, some of those kind of specific hang-up questions are, that, that's been the pieces that have never quite been clearly identified and articulated, simply because I think those are the pieces that would take, you know, probably the most time, the most effort, the most planning, because it's almost like that end point of like, yes, there's a decision made or a path chosen and therefore this is where, you know, the, you know, the, I'm thinking of a metaphor and I can't, but this is where we're going, right? So it feels wasteful to spend a lot of energy down different avenues if that's not what's going to be chosen for, you know, staff and people's times. However, for the community and for parents, I, I think that was the piece that was kind of always missing and why there, it was really difficult to talk about, it's a difficult to talk about anyway, but difficult to move forward. So for me, thinking about if everything stayed as it was in the building and things were just reorganized and, you know, specials look different or structure in the building look different or things like that, like having the who, what, where, when, how for the long-term, like this is, we have no more art in the classroom, we have no more music in the, like, what is that, that's of like more permanent solution to this? Kind of, those are those hangup questions because that is maybe we stay and it stays and then those are the questions that need to be kind of more answered. If sixth grade were to move, for me, that's those pieces. And I think we briefly kind of talked about it, kind of, but being able to identify, what is the schedule? What does the curriculum look like? Not, you know, oh, it could be this or it could be that, or they could have access to this, or we can, you know, decide that as they go, but like.
Concrete.
This is A, this is B, this could be C, but like we will choose something that's very similar to this and this is what your student will have when they come here. Because I feel like nobody, whether it's, you know, next year, two years from now, three years from now, wants that class to be, you know, the student that tries or pilots or attempts, you know, to do something like that. And I think, you know, if it's a pre-K movement or something like that, for me, and just kind of peripherally understanding all of the checkboxes that would have to happen for access and instruction and things like that, feasibility-wise and just thinking about it from that standpoint, I don't know that that's even an option. So I know people love that and I know that in theory, having, you know, access to high school students and having that bridge kind of right there in the same building, that's great. I just, you know, I see what it looks like, not on a daily basis, but on a fairly regular basis. And I know the hoops that people have to jump through with, you know, early childhood and stuff and that.
I'm going to interrupt and I'm going to say, based on all of the time that has been spent, there's really two options. Do nothing, which is keep everybody here and figure it out as we go, or move the sixth grade. There's really, we can, we can debate ad nauseam doing all these other things, but we can't, we can, I cannot, I'm not going to speak for you. I cannot sit here in good conscience and say we're going to decide to move the pre-K, knowing that there, that means all sorts of business, uh, uh, building refurbishments when we can't, we can't get what we need to be done to the building to house the students that are there. Kitchen, locker rooms, updates to the gym, whatever. Like, we can't, we can't go down a path where we're making massive changes to the high school. It's just.
It's, it feels fiscally irresponsible.
Well, it's fiscally irresponsible and it's not going to happen because we can't get things that are desperately needed done because it's, you know, we're on this precipice of change. So there's really the two options. So we don't need to talk about anything other than those. So it's, that, I say do nothing, but it's keep sixth grade here and figure out how that's going to work, or move the sixth grade and figure out how it's going to work. Can we at least all agree that those are really the only options?
Hey, I agree.
Is that, is that acceptable as far as your?
Yeah, I think there's some layers to those options and Jill touched on them. I think she mentioned art and mu-, and things like that, like, I think if the sixth grade stays here, those become some real questions that we'd have to answer. If we need an extra classroom, does art have to move onto a cart or music onto a cart rather having a specific room?
And if art goes over there, uh, you know, we don't have. And if art goes over there, you know, we don't have necessarily a music class, so there may not, like, how do we make music work at the high school? There's band, but there's not chorus, and there's not like a music-
Yep. And it might impact the individual lessons that currently happen here, because we might have to use some of that teacher's time to provide that, then-
So those are like-
Some give and takes.
Right, so those are, but I would say, like, those are the questions that we've been trying, like, I know-
Circling.
That we circle around, because, but if we can at least be all on the same page, that we have two directions to go, and try to flesh out where we're hung up on each of those, then I think we maybe save ourselves a little bit of time in discussion. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in, but I-
No, I, that's a, you're, yeah. So then, just like what Jill was starting to say, and what you started out as, is do we right now kind of make that list of what our questions or hangups are, and kind of go through, so that we can write that down, and obviously if it's, you know, we don't need to reiterate things that have already been stated. Does that make sense?
Yes, I think so. So.
I will throw it out there too, just so everyone knows, the census numbers, I agree. Don't know how accurate they can be, but Megan and I have already talked. She is gonna reach out to Kathy Kelly Regan at the end of next week or the following week, so that the August information is there. So we have accurate information from up until this point. But again, that changes, I said to Jen on the phone today. Between now and when that child goes into pre-K, there could be another twenty-five houses built in Granby that have students in them too, so.
So, why don't we take a quick stab at questions, lingering, I won't call them questions, I'll say lingering concerns of keeping the sixth grade here. Let's start there.
The concern of keeping it here, or the concern of it going there?
No, let's start with concerns of keeping it here. Classroom number of students in the classroom for the, um, for the old-
Classroom size.
Classroom.
If we're doing concerns though, are we also doing like benefits? I feel like I don't want it to look one-
I, I was just gonna-
That's truth.
I don't, I, I, I was, all I wanted to do was start, let's take five minutes and list concerns, then we'll do five minutes of benefits, then we'll do-
So when you keep sixth grade here, classrooms like kindergarten this year are at, in the twenties? Right, twenty, twenty-two?
I can't remember. It's gonna be, yeah, nineteen right now, but we got a couple more, it could very well belong to twenty-
So class size could be a concern. Having to put our specials on a cart?
Yeah, like space for specials.
So, when we, um, hold on, I'm trying to multitask and I'm feeling miserably. I just wanna get my stupid notebook out of my bag, and I can't. I'm just opening one. I can't do it.
Class size, specials on a cart.
So-
Did I hear someone say something, space in the classroom, too, or am I-
It was the same concept.
So when we say-
Space being like how many students-
Students in class?
Okay.
Class, class size that way? Number of students, I'll say. And that's a concern for every, every grade.
It'll depend on where it goes.
But it's just gonna bump up for everybody.
Like, right now, the, the sixth grade is two groups, and they're in the twenties each, twenty-
Yeah, twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four?
Twenty-four, twenty-four.
Yeah, I guess that's, you're touching on what I was wondering when you said it, because, right, the older they get, the bigger they get, the, if there's twenty-five sixth graders, it sometimes feels different than-
But I also think of like, how the teaching style has changed. Again, I can't turn off my teacher brain, you know, where you're not all sitting in desks in rows anymore. There's an instructional table, and there's movement, and there, you know, so then now you've got all these bodies in these rooms, and, you know, how are you working that into?
But to me, that's a concern regardless really of the number, uh, you know, like, the classrooms were set up to be twenty, at capacity, twenty-seven.
I would love to have then a fly back then on the wall.
So a concern of keeping them here. I guess a concern for me, actually, that was brought up during the last time we had, last year, the year prior, was actually curriculum of keeping the sixth grade here, and almost how it's could be limited by remaining at East Meadow, versus if they were at the high school, the additional options being six, seven, or however that would look.
And as you say that too, was it counselors, or-
It was.
That was a concern as well. Access to counselors versus-
Same, like social emotions.
Social workers.
Yes.
And I, I hope I'm saying that correctly.
So that was a concern, keeping them here?
Yeah. Because there was a guidance suite with, like, a tiered support and different things at the high school, and that it wasn't like that here.
Yeah, and I, to Stephanie's point, curriculum piece, I've touted this hundred-and-ten thousand dollars that we got last year for a new curriculum in East Meadow.
But it wasn't-
K to five.
K to five.
Mm-hmm. I'm probably in it, I just haven't gotten down there enough.
I think along the same lines with the counselor and social workers, the programming here, like, um, the ABA and things, I mean, that's gonna happen anyways at some point, but right now, it is, you know, K to six. And I don't think that they have the same tiered type, um-
It's what's being built in the pathways program there, so like, this is the first year that it's happening next-
Okay, okay.
I feel like that's, for me, that's less of a concern, because students' needs are gonna dictate whatever that looks like. So if there's not a need for it currently, and there is moving forward, then it's going to match whatever the needs grow and change to be. I just remember specifically that it being brought up, that maybe someone from here would have to go over there, and I actually mentioned, well, that would have to happen regardless, once that student reaches seventh grade.
Yes, so that's what we've been kind of planning for, that transition, um, so it's just-
Because even when we were East Meadow and West Street, we shared services.
Yep.
So just, I know that was a concern, but again, like, it would be accommodative regardless, because it has to be.
Yep.
But I just remember that was, I mean, elephant in the room is one of the biggest community concerns, was obviously the, um, separation of a six to twelve, because we don't have a six-eight wing or model. Sorry, it's not going, no, keeping here. Sorry, sorry.
I know.
I know.
I'm jumping ship.
That's okay.
Keeping here.
Concerns here. All right, that was about, about five minutes. Benefits.
Well, the benefit is keeping the K to six, which is, I feel like, a big thing that people were hitting home, is that that's what was voted on, the school was to be built K to six.
And we have to say it correctly, it's pre-K to six. It's not K to six, it's pre-K to six.
Well, it's, yes, it's pre, that was.
So.
Which in some ways is part of-
Part of the problem.
That's part of the problem, right. Um, but that would have been, the overall benefit would have been remaining what was kind of almost-
The original intent.
The original intent. That was still the tax payers when it was-
So for me, one of the benefits is sixth grade still gets recess and access to a playground. Like, the outdoor time. I, I know parents have concerns with their seventh grader going in without, like, that sort of recess mental break time.
So seventh grade does not get outdoor time?
Nope. Unless they're in gym.
I see.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't know that-
Please come to the table, Ally.
This is your lane.
Come to the-
I just wanna be very clear, like, I was not part of this whole process, so, from the get-go, but I have a lot to say about it, but I-
Well, I would welcome you to the table.
I want any other questions, if you have them.
We do, please join.
Please come to the table.
Yeah, I mean, because in my, my middle school experience, I didn't go in until seventh grade. Because the sixth grade wasn't elementary when I was a kid. But sixth, seventh, and eighth grade did have outside recess time.
Right, so we don't call it recess.
D R time.
When they eat, when the ki- when the kids eat, they come down, they go outside after. So we offer them to go outside and play basketball, they can go outside and sit at the picnic tables. Some of them will do movements, some will go for walks, some will just hang out and stand there and-
That's about what I recall.
Same, probably going, right, it's just not four-square and, you know, um, we have some mini project in the works around the basketball court area, so there's opportunity for them to go out. And we also do really stress the teachers to bring the students outside for movement breaks throughout the day. Um, I saw a group of teachers out there today, you know, so seventh graders do have opportunity to go outside. If it were the sixth graders coming in, that is something that we would strongly support, is that movement piece, because it is a concern. And yes, we all need, you know, to let off energy. And, so that is easy.
I think that's partially the evolution of education as well, right? Like, movement breaks, S E L, keeping that in mind. So, it's not the recess that we're thinking of as recess, but, um, yeah, but I still listed it as a benefit.
So I would even just say their schedule, having recess and specials, like, we'll call it a special.
Yep.
They have P, so, right, we rotate specials, so whether it's art, or some select band, or what have you, so we'd really have to look at that piece.
Well, so, I mean, art for seventh and eighth grader is, is also a teacher that has classes. So, like, now, if you introduce a third grade, like, do we, it's really become, in my, almost becomes like, we need another teacher. And that maybe goes to like, some of the shared services and stuff, but now we're jumping, like-
Right, we're still talking about benefits.
We're still needing benefits for keeping them for here, for just a few minutes. And maybe there aren't, Jenny, and, and I'm-
I think that, those are the big ones, is the schedule and the intention of this building. In my opinion. I don't know if anyone else has any other benefits. I mean, I think it's just that change, another one too, is change is hard, so it would be a change in and of itself. And, you know, looking at any type of difference, I think is, whether, whatever column that goes in, um, you know, it could be a benefit for some people, and it could be a concern for others. Well, and going off of that, I think one of the toughest things is that you don't see a six-to-twelve school. Like, when I was really looking, I was looking everywhere, like, is, does anywhere in Massachusetts have this? And that was-
Hard, is it Hardwick and Hardwich? One of those, I think, does. I was just talking to another teacher that lives out there.
There was a handful, there was, just wasn't many. There's not many. I think there was less than five, so it's, so I think that was just one of the, I wanna just call it a hangup, because you couldn't be like, oh, hey, you know, the next town over does this, it's not that big of a deal. If they did, I don't think anyone would be as like, oh, wait, you know?
Yeah, and there's also K to twelve schools. You know, like, there's not many.
Right, well, I mean, McDuffie is right down the road, six to twelve, but it's, I mean,
It's private.
It's a private school, so. Right, okay. I think we're done. Concerns for moving, keeping it in the same order, I'm not doing anything, we're doing concerns first and then benefits. Concerns for moving the sixth grade. I think we started to touch on them, specials and schedule, it's sort of like, to me, they dov- they dovetail, like, what's the, um, and my other concern is busing for, because now it would be six through twelve. I, I feel like the buses look empty, but I don't really know, but the routes might become larger.
Okay, I had a clarifying question, but I think you, I was wondering, is it, so busing and schedule, is start time also a concern that I've heard in the past?
Well, because it was, when we were talking about it, like, they thought the seven-twenty-five start was early for the sixth graders, again, I think it becomes like a change piece, like, oh, you know, but I do think that that, I'm, but when I'm saying schedule, I'm talking about like the, um,
Specials, recess.
Specials and lunch.
One of the things I had previously brought up was even, I know the high school kids that don't have a car, within a certain distance, are walking here, right? So now we have eleven-year-olds walking, because there's no more buses.
Yeah, we have many walkers.
Well, that's because their parents drive them, but you, all of Maximilian, Deerbrook, and Green Meadow would all be, would all be, there's, they have their own little carpool situation going on.
Like, there's three just in our, yeah.
Uh, in Maximilian, so, but I know the bus goes down there, but no one seems to get on it, so, I don't know. Um-
A concern.
Let's get right down to it, too, the anger intermingling of an eleven-year-old with, that has been brought up. The seventeens and eighteens.
So, I mean, I, to me, I, I know the seniors, and I know, and it's just like, honestly, from stories I've heard, I'm more concerned about the little kids in this building interacting with the older kids than, um, maybe that would be a benefit to get the sixth graders out, but, um-
I feel like there's zero opportunity for the students.
But I agree with Audrey, like, that was clearly a concern from the community, I think.
But, I, you know-
We didn't always, people didn't always agree with that, but I think that was a genuine concern.
Athletics was a big concern, what that looks like, as far as middle school sports, G A A, I know that was a big-
So Stephen and I were talking about that, 'cause I knew that that, like, that's a hot, and maybe we would, we would have to just put a line in the sand and say sixth grade would not be doing athletics at the high school, because we can't interrupt what we already have with the seventh and eighth grade, like, that would really hurt.
Yeah, we're, we're at max with a lot of our athletic program, and good problem to have, right?
Right.
Several years ago, it was voted to remove middle school sports, but they have an opportunity through G A A. So physically, they're in a very good place to be able to stay on at that grade level. So I would agree to having to draw a line in the sand there, um, and keep it seven through twelve.
Because it would really interrupt if we decided to create a middle school sport. We, we've allowed the feeder system to be developed with JV, like, JV in our town is mostly seventh, eighth, and ninth. So if we did that, we would, we would elimi- eliminate JV sports, almost, because everything would have to be varsity, because you wouldn't have the kids, because they would have to be pulled down. So I think if we alleviate that as a concern and just put sort of the line in the sand, that one maybe doesn't become as, um, my, go ahead, go ahead.
I also think I heard in the past, and I think it relates somewhat to one of the benefits Stephanie mentioned about maintaining the pre-K through six, right? It's that building and not this building, right? Just the facilities.
That was my next one.
So I think that was something that was clear the last time we talked about it.
Which I hate that anyways, to be, personally. It drives me kind of bonkers, because-
Yeah, I get it, but, right?
But-
I also, I wouldn't be wearing a jacket and tie if we were in that building right now, like, you know?
I'm not sure why you are. Okay, so that was our first twenty minutes. I'm gonna say, let's do another, like, fifteen on this, we're having great conversations, so.
I guess to go along though with the facility concern, it was actually just the classroom space. We know that there's enough classrooms, but, you know, what are the, it was said many times that there really wasn't much cost, but then we were like, well, there's still would, there, there still would be a cost to some point. What does that look like?
Like, so that would be a good question to write down, if you could estimate it.
Like, just, I don't, I didn't like the idea of, like, there's no cost there, because there's still, maybe it's not as, it's the the least costly option, but what would it be? What needs to be purchased, or?
So for me, just like, when we're talking about this, and first of all, I would like to say I really appreciate how well this conversation is going, so, there's that. But we were talking quickly about specials and what we have and what we don't have. To me, it's almost a bit of a budget concern, that we might have to do some hiring or shared resources for a music teacher or an art teacher, because I'm not sure that the art situation could accommodate having, you know, an, another class, when that teacher already has a, is a social studies teacher, right? And does some science?
Nope.
No, just social studies?
Social studies and one section of art.
Or if you think about it on the flip side, if they go down by a grade here, what does that look like for the specialist schedules versus what they would have had with, you know, another two or three classrooms? You know?
Which, I'm already kind of curious how it works here, because does preschool get specials? So I feel like it's already-
Art, and-
Gym? Because I mean, most schools, being a K to five, whether that would free up, would that be a benefit, that preschool might get-
Preschool could.
Specials that they don't currently have.
Yeah, I think how we divvy up those F T Es would certainly, like, it would have, it would have an impact. That's what, one of the things that we don't know, would it require just changing where they're going during that time, or bringing out additional staff, right? Because it's gonna be difficult to say, oh, we only need a point-two or a point-three, and then you're posting to hire that, those are hard to come by.
I think some of the push-in, I believe, was to get the hours up. So I, it would go both ways potentially. What's the effects regardless of staying or leaving? Because that's important. Same thing with the sixth, like, would the sixth grade teachers move there, or are there, is there enough space within the current teacher's schedules there? I'm not sure, but what does that look like? I guess that's a big question.
Okay, um, benefits.
Of where we at?
I need a-
Moving sixth grade. Moving sixth grade space.
Yeah, I mean, they have a lot of different opportunities, like academically, socially, emotionally.
So as we say, the benefits academically, are there in fact academic benefits? I'd like to clarify that because I feel like that was talked a lot about, but then there was also talk, we'll keep the sixth grades completely secluded, which I don't love either personally. I feel like that's traumatic in a way.
I think there was stuff put out there like, oh, we're gonna have this academy for sixth grade, sixth through eighth grade and we're gonna offer and classes were thrown around that aren't there. Like we were, the, the classes that were mentioned did not exist. So, I mean, I would love it, but when we start talking about adding classes, that, there's a cost associated with that. Like, you know, do we, do we need to get curriculum to do it? Do we have the teacher to do it, like, you know? So that's sort of a concern of mine when we talk about that and, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, anytime I think that you have proximity of people that are using and sharing the same curricular resource materials, like that's a benefit in and of itself. Because right now, you, even you just said it with the ELA materials, you have K to five all using the same thing. Sixth grade's on their own island. So like when you're looking at, you know, talking to each other, planning together, sharing materials, like they have each other instead of like.
Yeah, so like I see that as a benefit certainly for the teachers, which would have an impact on the students. I can see why that's not probably like a bulletin board highlight for parents or the community, but I see that academically having those.
So if curriculum is usually purchased, we're at sixth, seventh and eighth. Why wouldn't our sixth graders be using what they're using next door?
Because.
We didn't do it that way?
Yeah, or what's that?
I said, when was the last time new curriculum was purchased for sixth, seventh and eighth? Sorry, yeah, he's smiling and nodding at me.
Because that was the other thing that was said, is that, you know, this.
So it's like three islands.
So we're about, we, the curriculum that we have is not sustainable across all of the grades.
We're gonna just build some bridges.
They're Caribbean islands, I'm interested.
Here's one thing that I think of, like Project Lead the Way is a, you know, is a program that we have at the school.
An Open Sayad.
An Open Sayad, which is a new adopted curriculum for grades seven and eight this year and they're piloting high school next year, which is pretty incredible. Project Lead the Way and Open Sayad are really kind of founded by the same people. It's a lot of inquiry based learning, hands on, it's what we want, right? So ideally, if you're looking at what the space would look like, that's something we can help answer, right? Tables and kids at workstations and doing like those types of things, like a lot of innovate, I have a plan for an innovation zone, with the, there's opportunity there. So I feel like those are some of the questions you have that we could look at. But the Project Lead the Way is a program that, is it the project gateway?
Yeah, so actually, the original grant that we wrote for Project Lead the Way, talked about the possibility of sixth grade, but again, like logistically with the FTEs, to have that teacher come here for a certain time based on their schedule and that.
Which is why it can't happen here yet, kind of a situation.
So if they ideally.
Design and modeling, automation, robotics.
That's the pathway.
Those would be opportunities, but to Jen's point, we'd have to free up something else in that teacher's schedule. Or have it be like a sixth and seventh grade group that goes in for part of it. And then that would allow us still to maintain some of the eighth to ninth that we have, where the eighth graders could take the Algebra I class in eighth grade that we've talked about, wanting to maintain, right? We don't want to say, we're gonna be so stringent, six to eight, that we're gonna take opportunities away. I think the conversation talks about like, how do we be nimble enough to provide it all?
And we do have some of those experiences as it is right now. You know, a couple of our classes, our elective classes actually are seven and eight, you know, there's maybe.
There's some freshmen in some of those seventh grade classes and eighth, I mean, Marison got in eighth grade and she's got seventh graders and ninth graders in some of her electives.
Ideally, right, when you're preparing students for college, you know, and whatever their, whatever they decide to, to go, their pathway, you could possibly be in a class with older kids. And I, I wanted to speak to your point, Audrey, you mentioned something about the mingling. I really want to understand what the concern is around mingling because.
Well, the concern of mingling is not necessarily mine personally, it's been much been shared in the past. So just to clarify.
I hear the concern and our students are ever really together to be mingling. It would be our seniors probably chaperoning the dances, you know, if they were to have dances. Like that was an opportunity where they would really be together. Are they walking in the halls? Those are answers. We want to be able to say like, I'm sure they'll pass, you know, in the hallway, but that's where we come in as administrators and design this, right? So it answers some of those concerns as parents that they have because like when, I forget, was it you? That you were, one of the moments you were like, oh, this is the building, right? Aesthetically, like that's my hang up too, but even more is hearing the concern of the parents. When we send kids here, we had 30 something kids here last year and we're getting ready for another round of kids where our kids are pushing those kids on the swings. They're getting invited to birthday parties, they're providing speech services in classrooms, reading tutorial in classes. Like these are these kids that are, their concerns are about, you know, so that would be an example of them mingling. Do we call it mingling? No. They're supporting them, they're teaching them how to read. It's not necessarily mingling. So like I get worked up over that because I'm very protective of our students, like we have great kids here.
Yeah, as was I. I think if I remember correctly, the concern was more about like.
Language innuendo on the bathroom.
Buses in bathrooms.
Where you're not.
And then I'm, you know, I'm like, I'm a Gramby grad. Like I was a seventh grader that went into a bathroom where the seniors were in there. I mean, we're, we're going way back to the late eighties, early nineties and they were smoking in the bathrooms and everything else and all of us Sevys knew which bathrooms to use and which we didn't. But then when you're upstairs, sometimes you just had to go and it was like, I don't want to go! And so it's like, I can relate to some of that, but I never, I never felt unsafe. My, I have a daughter that's a senior, she never felt unsafe with, you know, seven through 12. She rode the bus until, gosh, I don't remember, longer than she wanted to. But, you know, I, so some of those things where I'm like, like I felt like I got swept up into some of that, but really when you, we're lucky because we're a small school and we're not an inner city school, like, you know. I, I don't think we, we're very lucky. We, we have issues, but the issues that we have, I think are not as great as in some other places. So I, I don't worry about the mingling as much and I think we could structure around, but one of the things that was thrown out there that got people crazy was like, oh, well, we're gonna create a different bell schedule for the sixth graders. Well, that's disruptive to the seventh through 12th graders if there's constantly a bell that's ringing, you know? And the sixth grade class time was supposedly shorter than the high school class time, like, you know, junior seven through 12. So it's like, well, we're interrupting their learning period of, you know, 55 minutes as opposed to a 40 minute class or whatever it is, I'm just throwing out numbers, I know none of it's right. But like, is it right to keep having a bell ring every whatever? Because there should be a, a short blast bell that's for the sixth grade to pass and then everyone else is on the seventh through 12 bell schedule, so some of that was.
And that's just scheduling in itself. People were even asking, you know, are we gonna keep a sixth grade schedule? Like in here where you have one teacher for most of the day and you only switch for one? Or are we gonna jump to the seven, eight schedule and have them have more teachers? Like some of those, those questions were big. And I know like there was a concern, if we move the sixth grade, are we gonna lose kids to school choice who are gonna leave sooner? Which ultimately, to me, I think that if you're in school choice because they're moving there, you were probably gonna do it for seventh grade as well. So it's kind of, I wasn't as concerned about that, but I do remember that was one of the concerns because there was such a large amount of people. Again, though, I think that was very much because of the delivery of the process. We don't need to go down that rabbit hole, but I do think like this conversation's productive.
So we're switching back to concerns, benefits of moving the sixth graders there.
Ironically, after two years, I have five concerns for both and three benefits for both listed right now as I'm looking at my list. I wrote down one too, I think one of the benefits, and maybe this is redundant, like the space, right? I think it does provide that more flexibility here and then allows for that, three classrooms at each grade level. And again, not to be completely reliant on the census data, but in 25, 26, the census data was calling for 50 residents at kindergarten age and in 26, 27, 56 residents at kindergarten age. So that puts us to that three classrooms in K without any school choice and just residents. Again, I know a lot can change, but I think when we were looking at those numbers a year ago, they were jarring because next year was 36, then it was 29, then it was 50 and 56.
Yeah, that is crazy. I'd be curious to know, like, are they all still here?
Yeah, like I said, we're gonna reach out to Kathy, Kelly Regan for up to date information based on what she has, but again.
And that's where like it becomes one of those, like looking to the future. Like ultimately, you know, population, you can follow that either way because the boomers are whatever.
Well, and what do we want to see in the future? Like we want to see growth. Like we don't want to be hoping that we're staying small, that's. But, well, you want to stay small as a community, but I'm saying like, we don't want to be like, oh, I hope people are moving out because we don't have room for them. Like that's not the mindset that we want to be in. Not that we're not saying small, but that we're crossing our fingers that we're not sending homes to families. It's not where I would like to be. I'd like to have a, you know, you want to have a town that has schools that can support their communities.
Well, I think the other piece to this too, and we've talked about it, is that it's not always capacity in terms of like number or amount of students in a space or a building, but supporting the students in the right ways and meeting all of their needs. So making sure that whatever programming is happening for students is happening in a way that allows them to grow and develop that is, you know, beneficial for them. So whatever that needs to look like, wanting to make sure that that's still available. So, you know, whether it's, you know, two classrooms in second grade, three in third and this program or this space or whatever it is, because we have X amount of students that need Y. To me, like whether it's here or at the high school, like those things are all equally as important.
So one other thing that I'm just gonna throw out there and then our time is up, well, I'll give five minutes for discussion after, but I'm just gonna call it like it is, the building next door, we still don't have a kitchen. We're serving food, we have a structured lunch to accommodate serving. So let's just put it out there, we're trying to have a very meaningful discussion. If we add sixth grade to that, the lunches are already kind of full. Like that's the feedback that I'm getting, so we add.
We did go down to two lunches. That was a change from last year. We went from three to two because we had gone to three to expand and to separate everybody six feet apart.
But we're adding 60 more people to feed out of that space.
We'd have to go back to three lunches.
That's an area we would look at, six and seven being together, eight and nine, you know, 10, 11, 12, like that's easy. Those are things that.
It's not, it's not, it's not functionality.
Right.
It's capability of the, of the space.
Sure, sure. And right now, just to provide, because I don't know, when was the last time you were in the building? We, the stage right now is not utilized. We have everybody on the main floor.
No, no, I'm talking about feeding 60 more people.
Yeah.
Through lunch that's being built over here.
Sure, sure.
It's not, I, I know we can, we can, the tables that are there, we fed a lot more people in that cafeteria because we used to do long tables and there was like, you know, the rectangle tables with chairs that moved and we were jammed in there. So I, I know that that cafeteria can accommodate a lot more people, but that's not my concern. My concern is strictly, strictly functionality of the kitchen.
Yeah, they, they prop the food here and they bring it over, so if you tell them you need 150 or you need 250, they're making it. They've done an incredible job for the past couple of years, so I see the concern.
I guess like, it would be a worthwhile question to talk to food service about to say, are we hitting a tipping point by adding 60 more? Like they would know for sure, I mean, that's something we could speculate on, but they would know. Because essentially, they're feeding those 60 kids regardless. It's about getting over there, Canadian fishing and things like that. So, I mean, it's a question we could certainly ask.
It's my concern, so, you know, one of the ones that have, that's been, because it was a concern, lunches and everything else. So we're lucky that we're still not, you know, we don't have to do social distancing and stuff because that would be a real problem. Kids would be eating when they got in. All right, have breakfast and now you're having lunch and then you're not eating again until after.
Tell it felt here last year.
Yes.
It felt like basically there was someone in the cafeteria.
A concern, obviously, I don't know if we actually wrote it down, but was that MSBA concern? I don't know if that's on there, but as far as moving them over there, what are the repercussions? Not only for a new building, but also for this building.
And we've still never located an answer because they won't answer us.
And I don't think they want to lock themselves into an answer, just, you know.
But that's still a concern because if we end up in a situation where we could owe money back, I'm very confident in saying that would fall on the school because the town is gonna say that they've fulfilled their.
Yep.
So that's just a concern, huge concern.
I basically said to Jen earlier, I think that would come down to a matter of our lawyers versus their lawyers because we have a letter from MSBA saying, if you will grow your capacity, there's plenty of room next door.
But that capacity, I think that capacity letter references this building as K through, K through six, not pre-K through.
Yeah, I can double check, but that, but to your point, and Jen and I talked about this earlier, even if they don't try to recoup money, if there was a building project to move forward next door, they might say, well, we've already invested in your sixth grade, so sixth grade, any classroom spaces for sixth grade would not be reimbursable. So it might be six to one after another or.
It's a big unknown.
But again, yeah.
I don't know under any particular category, but I feel like us making a decision sooner rather than later also kind of calms a little because I feel like the more we talk about this, the more we hem and haw, the more it keeps feeling like this looming thing that's happening and like, so for me, I feel like I don't want to necessarily keep dragging this out all this whole school year. The sooner the better for like to be decision made. It just brews more negativity around it. I feel like that needs to be.
So I, I think we've had the best discussion we've ever had around this topic. I, I think if push came to shove, I could make a decision. I don't know if I would be comfortable with that. Like I don't know if I could look somebody in the eye and be like, we've made the best decision, we're well thought out. So I am perfectly comfortable abstaining from a vote as well, if everyone else wants to go forward. Because I, I'll say this, in every vote that I've ever made for school committee, I can talk and defend my position, yea or nay. I'm not comfortable doing that now, but if the rest of you are ready to make a decision, I am perfectly happy abstaining because I, I can't look myself in the mirror or look my friends in the eye and say, I'm 100% comfortable either way.
So if I could, like, I agree with Audrey, like there's some urgency around this. I also think at this point, it doesn't make sense to like rush to a vote tonight.
Correct, I was gonna say, I don't think we need to vote tonight because there are questions.
I guess my question would be, are there specific questions that you need answers from me or our team? We also have, I just went back and I looked, we also have those two quotes from CES, who sent us last year about looking at proposals. I would say one of them we shouldn't really consider, the other one. My only reason I bring it up is that is an outside, that's not coming from administration, that's not coming from school committee, it's an outside look at it. We have it, I'm not saying yea or nay, we should pursue that, but that was another option that we got last year. And George, you probably don't know what I'm talking about, whatever, I've seen that. So last year, we were talking about this and we talked about having a third party look at it. We looked at the Collaborative for Educational Services, I contacted them.
That would have been this spring, right? Actually, not even last year?
Maybe it was, I can.
It was the last school year.
I think you're right. Yeah, it was March, and basically they said like full middle school design report was 12 days in the $15,000 range. And then they had an initial school redesign report, I'll forward you all the email again, that was about $5,000. I didn't go back to them and harder haggle. I didn't go back to them and harder haggle or anything, I just took the information and shared it with you, so there's that, and I'm not saying I'm for or against it, I'm just saying that's something that we looked into last year as well.
If you have questions or anything, I'd be happy to sit down with Todd and the rest of the leadership team to help answer those, if you wanted to get those to us. I think, like, if I had my parent hat on and not my administrator hat, like, I can see where the questions are. Like, I was saying that to Steve, like, they wanna know, like, what water fountain they're using, they wanna know what bathroom they're going to, like, things like that. We're happy to provide some of that. My only ask respectfully is just to give us ample time for planning, because it's a bit busy throughout the year, and I think, like, having that time to do so would be really important. Um, it would put everyone's ease at mind, because I know that there were some feelings around how fast the process was before. And Todd is a very thoughtful person, he doesn't miss a beat, and um, I think that we would need that, and with Brad and Lisa being new and getting their feet under them here, there's a lot of changes, you know, that are coming here, but we would need that time to really sit down with all of us to be thoughtful and methodical about the whole process. So that's my only ask, and I'm happy to answer questions or do whatever you need, um, if there are some, you know, logistical questions around, if you wanna fake design of what it would really look like, you know, like a student, sample student schedule, like, some of those things, it's gonna take some planning, because all of the things that you talked about are solid points-
And I think that's what families are looking for, too, though.
And I agree with Ally, but I mentioned it to Jen earlier, and we will do it if asked. One thing I do worry about is us presenting something in October, November, and say you make the decision, and it gets moved, and it evolves, and that schedule isn't what it looks like at the end, right? Like, being held to that, too, because I don't want people to think that we're not being transparent, but similar to what I said about the budget, in April, we're building a budget for the next year, um, numbers that we have in April, and a lot changes between April and August, so happy to go through the exercise and try to provide a sample, but also wanna be clear to people that that sample may not be exactly what it looks like when it comes to reality, although I would say it would look very similar.
So for me, like, those are the, with each option, those are the two pieces of information that I think would answer any questions and concerns when I'm thinking about this in, like, the big picture kinda standpoint. So draft day schedule, however you wanna look at it, kind of beginning to end, or week, or I don't, I don't, you know, however that needs to look, um, for if sixth grade was at, um, the junior, senior high school, and kind of vice versa. If sixth grade was here, you know, option, you know, whatever it is, one, two, three, one, two, nothing, you know, like, what is it? What are those couple of choices that it could look like to kind of make things work if sixth grade stayed? You know, is it just specials, is it specials in larger class sizes, is it a one smaller classroom and a bigger, you know, and special? Whatever configuration that might be to kind of look at, I think to be very concrete, not to hold anybody, you know, that this is it, it's set in stone, we're done, but just to say, like-
Taste.
This is what it could be, because we're gonna have to move forward with one or the other.
So I guess my question is, going back to what Stephen was saying, when we looked at that other option through CES last year, do we want to reach out again and see what that is, or do we wanna? I don't wanna put too much either, though, on admin, saying, I wanna see a full schedule, I want all, you know, all these things in a timely manner, because it's such a big decision, when there's already, I'm sure, a million other things that need to get done as well, that we could potentially be like, no, we still want more. Is this something like that's what CES was offering to do for us? And as an unbiased person as well, 'cause it's gonna look a little bit differently potentially to the community, coming from an, an organization that, again, is kind of separate from us, then this is being pushed was a feeling before, not to say that it is right now, but that was definitely a thing, so I just wanna make sure that we're also utilizing the best of everyone's time, while being responsible fiscally as well. If it's something manageable, it's just-
Yeah, and I, I totally get what-
Yep.
Having those options, that makes a lot of sense, and I think keeping the sixth grade here is essentially saying, we are gonna commit to all sorts of flexibilities, and, I mean, we, I mean, as an organization, teachers, parents, because there is a space behind the stage. Is it a perfect classroom? No, could it work? We could move art, we could potentially use a smaller classroom, but then does one teacher, two teachers have twenty-five, and one teacher have twelve, right? Like, so, like, it is, it's tough to play through every scenario, but I think essentially, if that's the decision, we're essentially saying, like, we're committing to being very, very flexible in what that looks like, and we'll know that that's right or wrong, and just-
So I think either way, we're, we're creating flexibility.
Yeah.
If we move the sixth grade up, we're talking about adjusting teacher schedules to accommodate, you know, specials and different options for sixth grade, so you're gonna be asking more of teachers there to be, um, be, be flexible, you know, it's, it's a, no matter which way we go, people, and the, every people, all of, all the people need to be flexible, because it's, there's flexibility keeping them here, how we're looking at classes, how we're teaching, you know, are we doing less, um, less pull-out, more push-in, or more pull-out, combining classes with those that are small for different things, create opportunities, 'cause we're gonna be doing the same thing essentially in the high school. And then this is my silly thing, we probably wouldn't be able to call it junior, senior high school anymore, because it would be six through twelve, and that's not a junior, senior high school. So it would be something else, it would have to probably have a different name. Sixth grade is not, not junior high.
Yeah, it is.
Is it?
There's so many six, seven, eights. That's the norm, I would say, six, seven, eight.
That's usually a middle school.
Yeah, junior highs.
But that's junior high.
Middle.
Yeah, we argue about that all the time, if we're a middle school or a junior high, but I can't tell you which one we landed at, but it's in the student handbook.
As I say, that's why you have other surrounding districts that are seven to twelve, they just go totally different, like Hopkins Academy, it's neither. Smith Academy, it's neither, seven to twelve.
Yeah.
I just remember that's always been an eight, you know, a long, a seven to twelve school.
I think Hopkins is six now.
Uh-huh, yeah.
So another option is, again, I know we've been discussing it, is the next topic on the agenda is talking about retreat items, so people need some time to think through specific questions or anything like that, we'll have an opportunity next week as well, and we can take, like, if you're asking for something for us, I don't think we'll have a whole lot of brand-new information for next Tuesday anyway, so if you wanna take some time to digest this and come prepared with some questions or some asks next Tuesday, I think that's-
Did we create a list of questions today, though, as we were doing it? We just got the-
I just did concerns, benefits, there was a question about, like, the sixth grade teachers who might have to move, like, what it would look like, what teachers might move. Um, is sixty more kids for lunch over there a tipping point potentially, and then the draft day schedule options?
How would the sixth grade curriculum change? And then is there teacher licensing issues?
A lot of five through twelve now.
Yeah, there should not be any license, because-
But we're making it something-
Sixth grade teachers here.
Or that.
Well, the license is five through.
It's a five-through license.
Yeah, they're shifting a lot of them.
This is total, again, I'm just going back real quick to the CES thing, can I ask, like, Adam particularly, like, do you have a thought as far as the cost associated with potentially, or an input on if that would be feasible, if that's even something we should consider, or if you think we should just keep it in-house?
Um, I mean, the only thing I was thinking along those lines is that you sent the email today that the town also thought about doing their own feasibility study, so I don't know if it's something that-
Oh, yeah, so I, I sent-
I'm like, hang on.
I sent an email just to follow up, because it's been months since town meeting, and we had a two capital improvements.
So we haven't heard still?
So we were following up, and just, and then there was, they said, they made mention that they had money for, um, that we could potentially, the town could potentially use for another feasibility study for the high school, so I just followed up, they said that at town meeting when we were talking about budget and everything, so I sent an email to, um, them asking, I was gonna mention it before, but now's as good a time as any, just, um, asking the chairs of the select board and the finance committee if they have their subcommittee set, if they've had meetings, when they are, um, do they need anything from us, and, and the two capital improvements that I'm referring to are the work in the kitchen and the locker rooms, those are the two that were voted on, and then, um, if they need anything from us, or, um, when they're gonna be talking about the feasibility study. So, um, I haven't heard back from them, but again, I sent it this afternoon, so.
So just to keep that in mind, but back to Stephanie's question, I mean, I feel like it's one of those things, if we're serious about moving forward, and we do want an independent outside firm doing it, then we'll find the money.
I feel like that's like such a, if we're solid about thinking we're gonna do it, but, like, we wanna use it to see if we're solid about doing it, like, it's like this catch twenty-two.
And I feel like that's- The whole conversation has been, right, like, over the last year, it's like, we're, again, at some point, we need to make a decision, what that decision is, I feel like will then lead us to other decisions, I mean, I'm not gonna say whether we can, we should move forward, but then budget-wise, I think that'll be a group-
Right.
-discussion, um, but I think we should maybe go out and get another quote from them, I'm sure-
I'm sure it's changed a bit.
Prices have changed, um, I don't know, there's any negotiation on the prices, but-
I personally would just be interested in seeing, especially considering, like, they were, at this email, four days or twelve days, I mean, well, we are talking that this is a timely thing, and again, just having that outside perspective, clearly, I mean, I think that we're obviously very serious about this, otherwise we wouldn't be talking about it at such length, and we're having good productive conversation, which does feel like it's leading down a what makes most sense for the district, to me, that would be something I would be interested in, again, just getting that third-party perspective, and-
I feel like-
I mean, if we had them come in, I still feel like we need to give them, like, certain aspects or certain, like, targets that we're looking for, so when they come in, their work is targeted, right? We can't just have them come in and say, hey, figure this out for us, 'cause-
I don't know that I shared it with you, but it says the report would include highlighting the benefits of a middle school model, sample middles, model, sample model, middle school schedules, staffing, space utilization suggestions, based on current enrollment, identifying student support services, and performing a basic literature review. I should have forwarded it to you, sorry.
So, so that seems more targeted.
But we, we could be even more targeted, and again, I am not saying that, like, that's the path, I think there's some benefits to that, but I also think-
I know, I'm right down the middle when I see it.
Yeah, there's stuff that we could-
Well, 'cause to me, I see that price tag of five thousand or more, and I'm like, well, we could use-
Right.
-that money for things that we need to do to make adjustments, because either way, I think there's adjustments that need to be made, like, there's going to be a cost. I personally truly believe that there will be a cost associated either way. If we keep the sixth grade here, we maybe have to do some adjustments for curriculum, or what, whatever, something, have to do something, and if we, you know, maybe we're using a different space, maybe we need additional furniture, or, and if we move to a high school, I feel like there's going to be costs associated with that, so I'd rather not spend the same money twice, like, if, you know, I, I don't know.
Again, just thinking the town's gonna possibly move forward with feasibility study.
Right, and I would-
Here, we don't wanna have them come in, do all this work, we pay, and the feasibility study says, no, we can't be in this building, or whatever, then we've kinda wasted some time and money, went right back to square one, so.
So the be, the building feasibility study would be for?
I thought it was for the high school.
Yeah, my understanding was that they had set some money aside in the select board budget in order to, to a feasibility study around regionalization versus upgrades of junior, senior high school, right, like, looking at what all the options were, so that they could make an informed decision, should we be invited to participate with MSBA, if that was the direction that they would recommend us go in.
Okay.
So I feel like knowing that kind of should play a part in maybe some of the next steps, just my personal opinion.
And that brings up one of the biggest challenges about all this, there's, we've talked about capacity, I think we did a good job staying focused on that, but there's the MSBA letter, there's the building project next door, there, the feasibility study conducted by the select board, there's the kitchen project that was approved, but there's a subcommittee, right, so-
And then just, I'm just gonna state the obvious, you bring in sixty more kids, that's more use on a building that's already, oh, like, it, you know, it's, it is what it is, like, you, you can't say that it, just because there's space, that everything's fine, you know, like, we know it's not fine, so we can't just put lipstick on a pig and say that it's, you know, it's great.
Right.
We, we do a damn good job with what we have, and I, I will support it until my dying day, like, that, I'm very proud that my kids go here, and I, the building does not make the education, but at some point, we know that there's problem, there's, not problems, there's issues, things we'd like to see updated at the high school, and-
Need to be.
Need to be.
But those are issues that are there regardless, and if, if they're there, right.
When you're, when you're talking about that, though, you know, that's sixty more kids for more use in the bathrooms.
Well, even sixty at this point, it might be seventy-five in a couple of years, you know what I mean, because-
Right, so it's like, you, you, we, I don't wanna be the negative in Ally, I'm trying not to be, but to me, some of these things, they just, they're like neon signs in my head, like, we, we can't just say we're gonna do this, and there's, there are potential repercussions that, you know, you're putting more people through, through the building, it's, you know, it's really more wear and tear when it comes right down to it, and that is one of my concerns, and I didn't voice it as, like, a concern when we're talking about it, but to me, it's there, you know, like, I don't know.
More wear and tear on the building.
Because you've got sixty more kids in it.
I mean, over time, it's gonna, I don't know, I'm, I'm, sorry, I may block my face when I'm thinking, so I don't mean it as to you, I'm just processing.
Well, no, I mean, like, the building is at three hundred and something right now, or four hundred and something right now?
Three-
Three hundred and something now, 'cause this building's four hundred and something. So now, so call it three hundred, well, now it's three hundred and sixty there daily. Those sixty kids will go through there, but there, it will never really top three hundred and sixty at a time. It's been hovering around the three hundred, so if you introduce three hundred and sixty, I know the building capacity, if we're gonna play that game, is much higher than that.
I was gonna say, yeah, during its heyday.
But during its heyday, like, you know, it, that's-
But I also think that seeing those numbers bigger there, too, as a community, will be like, there's a lot of kids over there, we gotta do something, too.
Yeah, but we did it at the sake of taking them out of the grand-new building. Right?
I, I feel like it's always gonna be that, like, the kids are gonna leave here, and they're going to go there, whether they go there in sixth grade, or they go there in seventh, that is your destination unless you're going somewhere else, like, it's, it's-
No, I hear you, but I'm-
Converstination of the inevitable for me, and, you know, like, what happened here? Were we only supposed to have one preschool, and we ended up with two? Did the, the programming change, like, it's, but this is, like, education, like, it's just, it goes around, it goes back around, it goes back around, you know, you'd kinda have to just, these are the cards that we have right now, you have to move forward, and it, we're never gonna make anyone happy, and that's part of being on this board.
I'm just seeing it as a potential concern in my mind, like, that's, that's all, so, I mean, so I will pose this question, is anyone ready to vote right now?
No, I'd like to hear more answers from the questions that were posed today, personally.
So do we want those questions answered, do we wanna spend time at our retreat next week for that, or do we wanna give them more time and do it at our last meeting in September? Or do we wanna give them until October?
I don't think it'd be fair to ask anything of, like, this month at all, in September, with everything going on, that's daunting.
What do you think that you could, would be a logical time?
I think it's fair to say, if you have more questions, you should bring them Tuesday, and then, based on what we have there, I can give you an idea of, I think, how long I think it would take, right? Like, right now, a draft, day-to-day schedule with some options, a sixth grade, number of sixth grade teachers moving, sixty or more kids, a tipping point, sixth grade curriculum, I think we could have the answers to that probably by the end of this, by the end of September, but if there's ten more questions that come Tuesday, then I think, depending what they are, we might just need a little bit more time.
So why don't we include some time at the retreat? I'll say just a half an hour, um, of our time for that, I know, whatever, my time, I hit-
Twenty-five minutes turned into-
I know, 'cause I, I hit cancel, I, I thought I was trying to-
Do we wanna take that, um, or no-
Do we wanna take that, our notes from tonight, and put that into a more formal draft that we can add to, that way we're not hitting the same topics repeatedly next week?
Sure.
So that it's kind of all in one spot, and then if there's anything new, we can add it, otherwise, just kind of, that's our.
And then, while we're talking about it, we'll just throw it out there, when, when do we want, as a committee, to have a decision made, because we're, it's up to us, right, so, do we wanna say we wanna do this by November for planning purposes, do we wanna do it by December, is it, do we need to do it by the end of October, what, what are we, what is everyone's gut on it, because I think that's part of our problem, is that we're like, oh, well, we'll just keep kicking it down the road, but I think we need to put a, a finite line in the sand, so that we know, we have a target.
I'll speak. For me, if those questions get answered over the course of this month, and we have that information, for me, I think I would be able to make an informed decision and have information to back that decision, so, whether it be October or November, if there's like any lingering questions in October, and we make a decision in November, I feel like I would be able to at that point.
I think, well, I think for us, obviously, having more time on the backend is gonna benefit us in terms of planning, communication, like, just thinking through it, but I also respect the fact that there's still some questions, and.
So, let me ask this, too, if we go ahead and make a decision, and as you're going through the planning process, it becomes clear that it's not going to work, do we have an escape plan, like, can we rescind the vote, can we, I mean, I don't know, like, you're going through, and you uncover something, and you're like, oh.
Yeah, I feel like that's where we lean on each other, and we have that real honest conversation, and say, you know what, we don't think it's gonna work, like, this is too taxing, we might need to visit other options, like, I feel like that's where you have to kinda just trust in, you know, leadership, that if we may go through some of the schedule matrix, and come back at you and say, here are the things that we don't have figured out, that it's gonna be, really gonna be a challenge for us, but we won't know until we start to go through it.
Right.
My only ask is, I don't have a way in this decision, my only ask is we start scheduling and thinking about that in January, so, like, it's a big to-do when you do scheduling, are we including the six, or are we not including the six, because once you hit that go button.
So, the decision would need to be made before January.
Yeah, I feel like, I think Jill's spot on, I think, with November, because ideally, you wanna research sample schedules and our schedule, we do have a new scheduling committee at the school, and we allow ourselves four meetings to really make a decision on what schedule we were gonna go with next year, so that work is going, was our focus for September, October, November, and December, so, if there's an alternative plan, and there are new grade, you know, going into the mix, that's something we need to consider as well.
So, I would say, I'm gonna pose it this way, I would say we would try to have, well, potentially, the first meeting in November, or we only have one meeting in November now, right, is it November?
Only one in December.
Okay, I'm, whatever, by, say, we'll say the first meeting in November to make a decision, because that then allows Ally and her scheduling committee to, and however we go, to look at, to look at things, and, you know, if we need to pull the plug because it's not going to work, we have time, if we're, if we go in that direction, or if we, if we make the changes, stay here, then we're still gonna have to make changes, it's just not Ally and her scheduling committee, it's Lisa and Brad.
Well, and I'd like to add a little time, too, 'cause I have a feeling that when the community also hears that, like, this is coming, we may have additional questions that maybe come up that we wanna add in there.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Stephanie, because I do recall that you, Audrey, didn't your group put out, like, a survey, or there was a survey to parents about what their general concerns were, that could be really useful, I'm probably sure some of those same concerns are still floating around, there was some type of survey that I believe went, that went out to the community.
I'm not, by no means suggesting.
I don't recall that it was a survey to the community, but we definitely, it was the families that were on the committee.
No, I think there was one that went to, like, everyone, it might not have been with your work group, it might have actually been before that.
I think it was, she's right, I think it was before that, with Cheryl.
Yes, and I'm definitely not saying that, you know, we need to be doing, like, focus groups, like, we did, we did all of that.
Right, but that's good information to have, for sure.
But it's good information to reflect and just know in our heads that if we're gonna set a date, I could anticipate that we're gonna have potential people coming in with a lot of questions.
And really interesting, because probably some of the respondents on that survey probably now have children in seventh grade.
Right.
At the high school.
Right.
So, it'd be interesting to see if opinions have changed in a way, right, because some of the concerns, I'm not saying they're not legitimate.
Well, the kids, the kids that would have originally impacted are now in eighth grade.
Right.
Well, I mean, but I was showing up at those meetings, very concerned, and talking, and speaking out, and mind swirls.
Well, when we first started, initially started having the conversation.
Yeah, so that's how long it's been going around, is that, it was when they were in fifth grade, and now they're in eighth grade.
But I think that's an important piece for the community to think, to kind of reflect on as well, maybe they will, maybe they won't, but for us to kind of keep in mind about the past work, whether it be through the capacity committee, whether it be through the previous focus groups, or the tours that were offered, or the PowerPoints that were done, or previous school committee meetings, like, all of that back work has been done to kind of get this committee up to this point.
And all the players have changed, it's brand-new administration in this building, I'm the only remaining school committee member from that initial decision, we have a brand-new superintendent, we have a new high school principal, like, there's, it's, almost a hundred.
Same question.
But it's almost 100%, like, you know, almost 100% different, I'm, I'm the .001% that's the same.
That only negates the work that's already done, and I think that's the piece, though, that I hope doesn't get lost to the community.
And I think some of the people that were the most vocal opponents, their children now go somewhere else anyway, which is just unique to, to think about.
I'm sure that there's still even members in the community that have a say about it, back to that point of what was actually on the voting ballot, and what, you know, and I, you know, I do note those.
Right, so, that's one of the things that if we do end up getting people to come in, we have to keep it targeted, we're not, we're not gonna go back and look at what the East Meadow Building Group, or the New School Building Group did, and the decisions they made, they're done, we can't go backwards, and we, we would have to keep it very, you know, we're trying to, we did a lot of work, that's recent work, but we're not gonna go back, almost 10 years now, to look at what was done to get this building here, so, you know, I don't want to talk about the gym being too small, I don't wanna talk about, like, you know, the number of classrooms, and, you know, how the building was built and all of that, like, to me, at this point, I feel pretty firmly that that part's water under the bridge, you know, but we can talk about, like, what we wanna do going forward, and we'll entertain, you know, we'll, we'll listen to anybody that wants to come, of course, but I'm, I, I feel like we'll, we won't get ourselves sort of hogtied with some of that stuff, because really, there's nothing that we can do about stuff that happened 10 years ago, at this point, and 10 years from now, there'll be people sitting here that will be, you know, looking at decisions that we've made, that they think we left a mess for, or whatever, so.
So, do we wanna stick, going back to the original, to a decision something around November?
Yeah, I think we'll, school capacity has been living on the agenda anyway, we'll do that, but we'll, let's all keep in our heads that we wanna have a vote in the first meeting in November, next week is our retreat, so we'll leave some time on the agenda to only bring forward the questions that we have, if, if there's any additional, if you wouldn't mind typing up the ones that you've captured, and then only adding questions to that list, and then that gives them a solid month to work on things, and if they could get it, if you could get it to us by the last meeting in October, then we can think about it and vote the following, following week, does that make sense?
Yep.
Timewise?
Timeline-wise.
Okay, we went way over, we still have some stuff to go, so, sorry, I tried, but I wanted to see how much time was left, and I ended up hitting cancel instead of.
It was needed discussion.
Okay, thanks, Ally, I really appreciate you staying so late.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ally.
Have a nice day.
Okay, um, school committee retreat. I thought we already just talked about it, well, we have one thing on the agenda.
This is gonna take up a whole time, so.
Goal setting, I think we talked about, right?
Yeah, that, it was goal setting and evaluation stuff, right?
Yeah.
So, I think those are gonna be our three topics, so that's done. Uh, goal setting.
So, one thing, and I don't know that we need to talk about it at the retreat, that I've been just trying to wrap my head around, is trying to figure out an efficient way to get you all information, like, sometimes it's a one-off email, sometime, so, one thing that I've thought is just trying to put together either like a weekly or bi-weekly, like, not a whole lot of detail, like, bullet point, get it out to you all, so, I don't know if that would be helpful, and we don't have to have, like, communication as a retreat topic, if you think, you just wanna try that, we come back to it, so, one thing that I've just been, like, pondering, and how I can get you all the same information, and it might not touch everything that you might have on your mind, but it's just a way that I know that you're getting at least this information, and you might have other questions or other things that have come to your attention that I don't include, for whatever reason, but throwing it out there, if you wanted to talk about a three- retreat, fine, if not, I'm happy to just give it a try and take feedback as we go along.
I'm gonna put it on there, so, right now, we've got school capacity, we're, you were, Audrey, so what we're gonna say is, the first part of the retreat, we're going to only bring forward any questions that we have, Stephen's gonna type up the ones that he captured, and if we have any additional, and then that way, we won't revisit discussion, we'll just kinda keep it high level, then, goal setting, evaluation, and communication, and I feel like those four things, that's gonna be plenty.
Can you repeat communication, goals, and?
Evaluation.
Evaluation.
And, and school capacity, just bringing forward questions.
Um, the only other thing that I had thought about was, I guess it'll fall under goals, was we had talked about what we were going to discuss, so I guess it falls under goals, for example, at, at one of our last meetings you weren't at, but the one before, we had talked about finding out more information about warrants, and I had said that that's something that I'd like training on, but that would potentially fall under one of the goals we had mentioned, so I guess it'll all kinda come into place, so, 'cause that would be my other, like, do we talk about that at our retreat about budgets, or do we save that as a training session to fill one of our goals, you know what I'm saying? B, B, okay.
I think B, because I think.
Next.
All right.
I'm good.
All right, moving on, super intensive course.
I got all of her, I know.
Um, so, just wanna thank the leadership team and you all for your support last week with Convocation, it was a great way, I felt like, to kick off the year, I, I was happy, I was hoping to have 10 or 15 students greet teachers, I think we had 20, upwards of 25 by the time everyone arrived, I think from K through 12, so, really appreciate your efforts in supporting that, I think it was great that the teachers, I think, right, going back as a teacher that first day can be difficult, and you don't expect to see your students, and when you do, I think it just brings a different light to it, so, thank you, thank you to the staff, thank you to the leadership team, you know, new teacher orientation last week was also great, we spent new, uh, two days with our new teachers, really exciting about the group that we have coming in, and I think they really complement an already strong staff, as part of Convocation, it outlined our four guiding principles for the year, and they were about fostering strong and positive partnerships with students and families, meeting the needs of all students, and I explain when we talk about all, it's not just that struggling student, it's that advanced student, what are we doing for them, and everybody in between, designing powerful and engaging learning experiences, and then using relevant data in our decision-making, so, those are the four, I think, the way I presented it last week was, those are the four things that we'll hang our hat on, certainly this year, but I would expect to be on on this year, students returned yesterday, all the students, beyond the 25 who helped out last week, except for grades, pre-K and K, who arrived Tuesday, September 6, it was great to see students and interacting with our staff the past two days, and looking forward to seeing our pre-K and K students next week, reminder to folks, there's no school this Friday, September 2, and no school Monday, September 5, for in observance of Labor Day, and we are still hiring for a couple positions, one teacher position, and a couple para positions, so, if you know people who are looking, please have them reach out, we've been working really hard at it, and appreciate the team being creative and trying to fill those, and then, a reminder that we do have parents' nights coming up, East Meadows is Wednesday, September 14, the junior, senior high school is Thursday, September 15, and there'll be more information coming out in the weekly update from East Meadow, and the RIM report from the junior, senior high school, that's all I have.
Okay, and finance and operations?
Sure, I know you guys have missed the Lightning Project update, we are legit still missing one camera. On a better note, we did send them an email today, selling, telling them that we are severing ties with them, just, it's been a whole mess, obviously, over the last year-plus with them, uh, we do have a new vendor that's coming in, that's gonna take over a lot of the monitoring and all that stuff, already had them on site, they've already gotten acclimated with John and our system, so we're all set, so we are missing one camera still from that Lightning Project, not sure if we'll ever get it, anyway, uh, food service, so, a few things on food service, one, letters are going out, and applications are going out, so although the state has approved free meals for the year, they're still, and we're strongly encouraging families, and we're sending out free meal applications for families to fill out and complete, because when they complete those and send them back, it can qualify them for some additional benefits, so, all families, all students are receiving free meals, but you will get an application, we're encouraging them to fill it out, to get it back to us, again, who knows if this will be the norm going forward, free meals, we hope so, but for this year, we're asking the application to get filled out, we sent out a letter, I'm sending out letters to families now that were certified through the portal, and we'll follow up with some more information over the next couple of weeks, but we are asking families to fill out applications and send them back to us. Another change this year is, the state is requiring us to track all of our meals, so in the last couple of years, you've just made a check, like, here's a free meat, like, here's a free lunch, or here's for breakfast, this year, we have to use the point-of-sale system and track every student who is getting a meal, so, that's led to some delays, especially in the high school, because we are operating out of a smaller space, we have reduced the number of lunches, so there are more kids in those lunches, and now we're adding this additional step, so, I did hear the school on the first day announced that there was some delays in lunch, I foresee those probably happening for a few days until Ken and his staff kinda work those kinks out.
And part of it was their PINs, like, the kids didn't know, like, they knew.
They haven't used them.
Yeah, exactly, yep.
Since three years or whatever, yeah.
And we expected it, Ken and I had the conversation, we kind of knew it was coming, I don't think they knew the impact, but, so, they're dealing with that, Ken and Chris will be here on the 20th from Chartwell, so, they can add some more information to that, um, that was it, our end-of-year report is due 9:30, you'll have to sign the certification, as usual, I'm working on that, and just a quick 30B update, so, Massachusetts changed the legislation, so, 30B required, anything going out to bid had to be $50,000 or more, they raised that cap to $100,000, so, there's no sealed bids for anything up to $100,000 going forward, which is actually, it might not seem like a big thing, but it's actually a pretty big thing, so it's awesome that they passed that legislation, so, that doesn't honestly really affect us a lot, food service, we still would've had to go out to bid.
There are some things in there, like, we can now pay for, like, a digital subscription.
Yep. Yep.
-for, like, a three-year contract. We can pay it this fiscal year for the next three years, rather than having a budget each year to pay for it.
Yeah.
So, there are some efficiencies.
Yeah, there are some, a, a few things in there that'll make life easier. Um, that's it.
Excellent. CES, not yet?
21st we meet.
Okay. Um, anything else before we vote to go into executive session? Vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part A 3, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Jackie, can you do a roll call, please?
Ms. Hartel?
Aye.
Ms. Karen?
Aye.
Ms. Paul, please.
Aye.
Ms. Stewart, yes?
Ms. Paul, is here.
Aye.